See it, everyone is here, let me click this and we're gonna begin. So, good evening, I am Matt Borelli Chair and I call this meeting of June 8th to order. This open meeting of the Board is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020. The order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely for as long as reasonable public access is afforded. So the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will not allow for public comment. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that all attendees are participating by video conference. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Now to confirm that we have a quorum of the Board and that everyone can hear and be heard, I will call the name of each member. Please respond that you are here and can hear the meeting. Dan Matthews.
Here.
Marcus Nelson.
Here.
Lakshmi Balachandra.
Here.
Mary Ann Cooley.
Here.
Right, in the Chair, I hope you can hear me, otherwise you wouldn't have said here, so we're good, thank you. Meeting Business Ground Rules, we're now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do, permit you to cover some ground rules. Number one, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Number two, please remember to speak clearly and address the Chair to be recognized prior to speaking. All discussion must go through the Chair. Third, finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. As a first word of business, I would ask for a motion that this meeting will continue to the next posted meeting of the Board. If a technical problem develops, is there such a motion?
So moved.
There's a motion and there's a second. Marcus with the second motion, second, any discussion? Hearing none, Dan?
Yes.
Marcus?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Lakshmi?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes, thank you for that. So moving to the first item on the agenda is a proclamation in honor of George Yarid. It's going to be 100 years young and I've known George not that long, but quite a bit of time and this is a terrific honor. So with that, I turn it over to Mary Ann for a motion.
Whereas George J. Yarid was born on June 12th, 2021 in Quincy and is turning 100 years old on June 12th, 2021. Did I say 1921 or 2021 the first time, all the time I'm panicking? And whereas George J. Yarid married Dolores prior to leaving to serve in the military. And whereas George J. Yarid was a member of the US Armed Forces, serving honorably in the US Army during World War II in Okinawa. And whereas George J. Yarid, post-military, had a lengthy career at the General Mail Facility at the South Postal Enix in South Boston, the South Station in Boston. And whereas George and Dolores Yarid moved to Needham in October 1959 and raised their family, including his late son Frank, who served in the Air Force, his late son Robert, who was a Coast Guardsman in Vietnam, his daughter Sarah Jane, and his son George Jr. While serving in Vietnam, a munitions boat that Robert was assigned to in Dunang Harbor was struck by enemy forces and Robert was able to free the heavily damaged vehicle and guide it away from other vessels and personnel. Robert was awarded the Silver Star for his actions and in 2012, the US Coast Guard commissioned US Coast Guard Robert Yarid, WPC 1104, as Centennial Class Cutter based in Miami, Florida. And whereas George J. Yarid still lives in the Chestnut Street Home in Needham that he shared with his late wife Dolores, welcoming visits from his 11 grandchildren and nine great-grandchildren. And whereas George J. Yarid has remained an active member in the Lieutenant Manson H. Carter VFW Post 2498 in Needham, Massachusetts. Prior to the pandemic, he was still a regular attendee at the Post meetings and has been an active player in the Post Cribbage League. Now therefore be it resolved that the Needham Select Board and the citizens of Needham jointly expressed their congratulations on the 100th birthday of George J. Yarid and appreciation for his service to our country. I move that resolution.
Thank you, there's a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, just an amazing man and thank you George for your service and for your family's service, much appreciated. So with that, Dan?
Yes.
Lakshmi?
Congratulations and yes.
Marcus?
Yes, absolutely.
Mary Ann?
And I will just say that I think he's 100 years young, yes.
Great, and the Chair votes yes, thank you. Next item on the agenda, we have Park and Recreation Summer Update and with that, I invite in Cindy Chastain Chair, Chris Gerstl Vice Chair, and Stacy Mulroy, our Director of Park and Recreation. And while they're coming in the room, is there a motion on the consent agenda?
I was just about to move that, so moved.
There's a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Dan?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Lakshmi?
Yes.
Marcus?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes, thank you. And with that, I see Cindy and Stacy and let me go on my second screen and we are, and I see Chris Gerstl there, so we're in good hands, alright. I will, who wants to kick it off, Cindy?
Sure, I'll, I'll kick it off, Stacy knows that I like to talk, so she usually lets me go first, so.
There's less questions that way.
Yes, there are less questions, so hi everyone, thanks for inviting us in. It's nice to see you all, we're happy to be here, I was hoping we'd be in person, but maybe someday. So we're excited that summer is here and maybe COVID is not. And Stacy will give all the updates because as you know Stacy and the staff do all of the work. And Chris and I and the Commission, basically, we try to advise and then keep out of the way. But we're excited to have a pool season, we're excited that there's, we think there's a lot of interest in the community based on the sale of passes. And we're really looking forward to what's gonna happen this year and, and you know, I think Stacy will tell you that we are gonna be very flexible because we just don't know how things are gonna pan out. But we really appreciate the support of the community. You know, Park and Rec is always more to do and we always have more requests, but the community has supported us with resources incredibly for the last very many years, so we appreciate that and we appreciate that they continue to do that. But let me turn it over to Stacy unless my Vice Chair Chris has anything to add?
The only thing I would like to add is that yes, we are very excited about the pool season, but we're also excited about all the other programs that we do, for the summer camps and the cricket tiers. So it's not just the pool, which I know is a big focus, but it's everything that we can do, you know, for the community and we're very excited. We also have a new Assistant Director that I think we're finally getting our team together here to work as a great staff, so Stacy knows that she has the full support of the Park and Rec Commission and we're here to help as much as we can.
Right, thank you for that, Chris, Stacy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you everybody for inviting me to chat with you about the summer upcoming programs. I'll start with the programs. I know you guys are all chomping at the bit to hear about the pool, so I'm gonna push that off a little, gain some momentum in this meeting. So we're, we're offering our typical programs, it's seven weeks for our core program, starting on the 28th, they're week-long programs and they'll go to the 15th. So those are the programs that will run internally and we're running them at Newman. We're running your basic recess camp, which is like your, excuse me, your basic, basic recess program. So arts and crafts, sports, activities, downtime, playground time, that kind of thing. And then theater and tennis at Newman. At Elliott, we are running our recess program and then we're also working with the school program for their summer bridges, so the kids go to some extra reading and math in the summer in the morning and then come to us and hang out with us, run around in the afternoon. I think the parents will appreciate that. We're doing sports up at the high school and then we're doing, for our younger, more timid kids and our very young tots, we're doing a program down at Cricket. And again, that will be outside and everything's outside as much as humanly possible, depending on weather. And those are our four major programs, so the week before that, where the kids are just out of school, we're gonna offer, we do, we are offering some vendor programs, so we bring in some outside vendors, so parents have an option. And the same thing with the last two weeks in August, we couldn't guarantee staffing, so we're bringing in vendors to run programs so that people have some care available. So, any questions on the programs?
Lakshmi?
Oh, sorry, Matt.
Hi Stacy, thank you so much for coming. So just a question, I, I was curious how you decide what location to go to? Cause you know, my kids have participated and the programs are fantastic, so. But it sounds like you rotate and I was curious why these particular locations and then how are you with staffing, like how is that process going? So I have, I guess, three questions. Placement, staffing, and then the final one is about, so you mentioned tennis at Newman and I know those courts are a little, well, let's say, they, they could be better. So I was curious, like how are you, how are you managing the facilities?
Sure, so I'll start with placement. We have our ideal schools that we like to work with, but we work collaboratively with the building and maintenance division over at DPW, so if any schools need some upgrades or they're doing some heavy work in the areas that we typically use, the gyms, cafeteria, auditoriums. If there's upgrades to those areas or there's big projects in a particular school, we won't go to that school that summer. We'll rotate away to give the opportunity to DPW to get the work done when the kids are not around. So that is the big driver, we like Newman because of the tennis courts. We like Elliott because it has the bigger playgrounds. And Cricket is great because it's not attached to a school. So we have a little bit more flexibility when we get in and out of there. But that's really the driver. For, for program staffing, they're, actually it's, it's easier to staff programs, it's a set schedule, it's Monday to Friday, nine to three-ish. They know when they start, they know when they end, and they don't have to work weekends. And they don't need any certifications, so typically it's easier to staff our programs for counselor positions than it is for the pool, lifeguard and WSI stuff. And the last one is, excuse me, tennis courts, thank you, facilities. I agree, all of our tennis courts need love, definitely, and Newman will definitely need, we'll have to take a heavy look at it in the fall because the highs, because the high school courts weren't great this year, they use Newman. And so now Newman is going to need more love. Mills looks okay, like I said, all of them could use some real work. But we do have that on our capital plan, long-term, we have a placeholder, which one we're gonna get to, we don't know. We have done some preliminary, reaching out for some, just sealing, resealing the courts, but some of the courts need like a real renovation, so we'll have to get somebody come in and take a look at them. But they are on our docket.
Thank you.
Thank you Stacy, and I would echo that, I know it's in the long-term plan, but with COVID pushing everyone outdoors and getting so much more use, it is something where I'd like to see that, you know, the tennis maintenance or upgrade be looked at again, but I know you're on top of it and have it in the long plan, I know things have been condensed, you know, because of COVID and used a lot, so thank you for that. I just had a question as far as COVID and, you know, the restrictions are being relaxed and CDC has different camp guidelines and things are evolving and changing. What is the experience gonna be like, like at this time, as far as, you said there's gonna be a lot of mostly outdoors, but you know, is masks or is there gonna be distancing or what is the, the protocol you're looking at today? And of course, it was gonna change most likely.
Sure, today, I'm not, I'm not gonna confirm anything for tomorrow, but for today.
Right.
What our plan is to require that everybody, kids and staff have a mask on their person. Outside, we will not ask, we will not be requiring anybody to wear a mask. They're obviously more than welcome to whenever they want. Indoors, everybody will be required to wear a mask. And so like I said, indoors is typically bathroom breaks. If it's extremely hot and they need to come into the AC, we'll rotate groups in and out, 10 to 15 minutes. And then, you know, rain or passing storms will obviously go inside, but inside masks, outside, we won't require them, but anybody is obviously welcome to wear them.
Thank you Stacy, any question, Mary Ann?
The question about the tennis courts, Kate makes me think, or maybe Dave. We have built in to a fund, right, the ability to replace the turf fields. Is that fund's use restricted to the turf fields or could we also use it looking at sort of a steady state so that as we look at tennis courts, as we look at the need to redo other fields, that that fund might be a source of funding on a steady basis for the town, just wondering?
Certainly, we would need to prioritize funding into the fund because we did deplete it significantly with the most recent replacement of the turf fields, but it is a strategy that we can employ.
And I, I just know we haven't thought about it in that way, but I just wonder if that would smooth funding going forward?
Right, that's a good, the Athletic Facility Fund is what Mary Ann's referring to, I think that, that makes some sense to look into. Any further question?
And on the tennis courts, we're looking at all of our facilities, so we're looking at tennis courts, we're looking at our fields, grass and turf, we're looking at our basketball courts, we're looking at, dare I say it, on the recorded video pickleball courts in town or the possibility of those in town, yeah. So, you know, I have heard we are looking into what we can do and where we can do it, so we're, we're looking at the facilities as a, as a giant group and seeing where we can prioritize.
Don't forget that skate park idea, so we're all good.
It's coming, as long as you get your skateboard out there, Matt, I will definitely put it up.
It'll be a christening, it'll be very interesting. Alright. Yeah, right, absolutely. Any further questions? As I go through the screens here, no, okay, let's hear about the pool, Stacy.
So we'll start with the spray deck, the spray deck opened this past weekend, it is very popular and it's right outside my window at my office, so it's hilarious to watch, it is popular from 10 to 12:30 and then it is a ghost town from like 12:32, clear naptime, right? They get them in, they run them around, they go home, and then they come back after school. So that has been up and running and we're operating that roughly 10 to 6 right now. Opening weekend, our soft opening for the pools, the pools at Rosemary is this weekend. And so we're gonna open Friday, Saturday, Sunday from 2 to 7:30 and we'll have three time slots. And I'll go more into the time slot madness after I go through the, the days that were open. And then we are closed, so that's Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and then Monday through Thursday, we're closed for lots of training. We took the opportunity while the kids are still in, in public school, it's still in school. So we are doing lifeguard training, we're doing lifeguard recertification, and we're doing swim lesson instructor training and ongoing maintenance. And then starting on the weekend of the 18th, Friday the 18th, we'll be opening to the public fully, full schedule until August 15th, definite. And then after August 15th, we will stay open as long as we can, as the kids start to go back to college or fall sports begin, we will alter the hours that we're open, if we have to go every other day, depending on the number of staff. But from June 18th to August 15th, we'll open full schedule. Now, we're still doing time slots and right now, we're doing capacity limits for, we have capacity limits for the time slots that are all based on our staff. So the lifeguard shortage across the nation is actually making headlines, so it is a real issue. Until yet today, we only had about 11 fully certified lifeguards to open the weekend and for a fully operational pool, we would need 16 to 18 guards to rotate. Where I'm running a class this Thursday to recertify nine more lifeguards, so that number will jump. We'll get through this weekend and then we'll have more lifeguards after the following week when we run the next certification class. So we're still asking, if people are interested, we will certify them. We will run courses, we will reimburse them if they wanna take the course somewhere else, but it, it's been an interesting challenge this year, lifeguarding is always a tough, it's been getting worse and harder and harder every year, this year's been much more difficult, I think, in general. Nobody wants to take a 40-hour class in order to work, certainly not teenagers, though we love them. And everything opened at the same time, so everybody needs more staff, everybody is hiring. And so we're struggling, but we're, we're doing what we can and we have all of our irons in the fire trying to get as many staff on board as we can.
Thank you Stacy, so the, the lifeguards are the true bottleneck, not so much, last year was COVID with the time slots and making sure you had, you know, only a certain amount of people, but right now it looks like it's really the lifeguards.
It's really just the lifeguards and in 2019, we had the, the pleasure, I was not here, but the department had the pleasure of being very popular, the pool, the pool was overwhelmingly popular. And, you know, we were just, we're not, we weren't ready and staff had to keep working, they worked long hours, they worked a lot of weekends. And I, I want to avoid taxing our staff right from the get-go, so I want to make sure we have enough staff, we want to make sure they're not working too many hours in the hot sun. There's so much research that shows that if you put a lifeguard in a chair for too long, they start to fade away and that is not a place where you want them, you want them focused and attentive the whole time. So we're trying to get as many staff as we can to make sure that we're keeping the public as safe as possible.
Cindy and then Marcus.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I just want to add that the, the Commission and the Department's top priority is safety. So as much as we, we want to serve the community to the best of our ability, we want to be sure that we staff that pool safely and staff our program safely. So we are focused on that, if we don't have enough lifeguards, then we will limit how many people can be at the facility just because we want to be safe and we want our staff to be safe. Our staff are, you know, mostly, they're young people for the most part and we're concerned about their safety, so that is our top priority. And the other thing that the Commission is very concerned with is giving swim lessons. We would love for every kid in Needham to know how to swim, so we encourage parents to get their kids to swim lessons and, you know, we will, we will figure out a way if we can to give anybody who needs us, needs to learn how to swim or wants to learn how to swim, lessons to swim, so.
And that's kids of all ages, so let George know if he would like some swim lessons, I'd be happy.
Good qualify, thank you Stacy, and Marcus?
Yeah, just a couple of questions, thank you all for being here, it's nice to see everybody. So what is the, I guess, the minimum age of a lifeguard? Is it, can it be high school or is it preferably college? And if you're doing some of the trainings and whatnot during the week, are we missing out on high school kids if you are trying to get more staff?
It's a good question, so ideally, you know, the brain is not fully formed until you're 25, so that's when I would want to hire lifeguards. You can take the Red Cross course at 15. Historically, the Department has never hired anybody below the age of 16. We are looking at hiring some 15-year-olds as junior lifeguards working nominal amount of hours, perhaps having them work as the slide monitors and get their feet wet, pun intended, and to see how they do before we put them up in a chair in the lap pool where the deep end is. So that, we are working with some 15-year-olds, but it is not ideal, but they can get certified, so. That's where we're going with that. The training that we're doing for the lifeguard recertification is happening this week, it's happening after school and then I may have misspoke, the lifeguard cert, the WSI course is next week, that's the swim lesson instructor. And then the following week, I think, is when we're doing the lifeguard research, so the kids will be out of school. If we can get another one this week, we'll just alter the times and go after school.
Thank you.
Mary Ann?
I had sort of a similar related question, I wondered if it would be possible to do another lifeguard certification sometime later in the summer, like in August, maybe to pick up some more high school students to get through the fall, who then might be ready to come back next summer.
So we've already started discussing scheduling that with our instructor that will be here in a couple of weeks to not only get people for the following year, but people whose certifications will expire before next summer, so then they'll be ready to go and we won't be scrambling trying to get them certified before we open the pool. But yes, definitely.
Further questions?
Marcus, I have heard that you are in between jobs, so if you are looking for a position, a part-time gig, we're offering a lifeguarding course in two weeks, so just reach out.
I don't think you want that, well, you want to think about safety and the best interest for the town, you probably want me just watching from a distance encouraging everybody to do well.
Well said, great, just before we leave, I just had an item that, you know, we're talking about summer moving into fall and I know that trash on the field and the discussion of some type of park ranger has been percolating, you know, over the years and I just think as we move forward, I don't have the discussion tonight, but something to think about and getting our heads together and it's probably worth another meeting. And it's gonna be one of my goals that I bring to our session is to try to address some of these issues and I know we've had brainstorming in the past, but I think it's time looking at the money that we put into the fields and sometimes how they're left, either by sports groups or just people using it or walking across them, I don't know, but I know it's a priority for me and I know, I believe it's a priority, or I know it is for the Commission, so just want to tell you that, you know, I'm in support of that and I hope we have further discussion down the road on that sooner rather than later.
Thank you.
So, great, and with that, I want to thank you for coming and looking forward to successful summer season, so thanks for all your hard work.
Stop by any time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll let them clear and next item on the agenda is policing recommendation update. Chief Schlittler? As we come in, great, welcome Chief. I think Cindy's still here. I saw the chief, but does anyone else see him?
I was just checking to make sure you were all paying attention.
Magic trick.
There it is, okay. We're back, excellent, welcome Chief, nice to see you.
Good to see you.
Thank you, and before we lead it off, I just do want to acknowledge it's been a past week in Massachusetts, really a tragic week for the police. And you had two officers in Braintree that were shot and of course you had the officer in Worcester who was killed in line of duty, so just thoughts for the police departments all around in Massachusetts and to, to their families, so I just wanted to acknowledge that before we began, Chief.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that, Matt.
And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Kate to give an introduction on tonight's presentation and discussion, Kate?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just, I just briefly wanted to let the Board know that the Status of Recommendations report that John and I prepared include recommendations that were made by the Nuari Working Group in several equal justice Needham reports that were reviewed by the Board and by the Tidwell Report. So if you're wondering where these recommendations came from, they came from all of those sources. And I'd also want to point out that we did include in the Board's fact sheet and in the online packet a very detailed presentation of the Police Department's operations. That was for informational purposes, I wanted to let you know in advance that we weren't gonna go through the 60 pages tonight. But if you had any questions, the Chief is here to answer them and I do encourage people to take a look and maybe we can link it up so people will be able to find it easily, so we can take care of that, so. Other than that, Mr. Chair, I turn it over to the Chief, that's okay with you?
Great, that is, thank you Kate, the floor is yours Chief.
Thank you very much, what we'll do is we'll go over some of the status of the recommendations as they are in place right now. Kind of let you know where we are. There are recommendations, as the Town Manager indicated, from Nuari, from the Tidwell Report and EJN. Some of the recommendations are repetitive, so I won't respond to each one of those that are repetitive, but I will address them at one point during the, the presentation. The, one of the recommendations were to meet regularly with stakeholder groups and communities of color to build mutual trust and respect. We, I will establish connection with representatives of the community resource groups and individuals have, who have reached out about their personal experience with race and policing in Needham. And that's something that we'll report back in sometime in October. What I could tell you is, over the past few months, I've had the ability to meet with the local AAPI group that really consisted of people of Needham, from Needham and the surrounding communities. And part of that was to, to talk about the increase in violence and hate crimes against the AAPI community. And one of the goals of that discussion was to let them know that the police are here for them and that we want them to contact us. We also provided them with some tips on, on how to do that. Um, and we also discussed the process in which um, some of these complaints that would come in, how they'd be investigated, how they'd be processed, whether the criminal side, civil side, and how, how that process would, uh, take place. I also spoke with the chair of the Chinese friends in Needham. I was a panelist with the Norfolk District Attorney, uh, and county representatives from local government. Uh, regarding the increase in A A P I hate crimes and violence towards the A A P I community. And the, the format of that, uh, was similar to the one I just spoke to. It's just a little, it actually talked with all the communities within Norfolk County. I've recently had a meeting with the Chair of the Human Rights Committee to discuss the collaboration, our role within the Human Rights Committee going forward. I met with several Human Rights Committee members to discuss the creation of a response and complaint process that will involve, uh, the police department kind of as a catalyst. Um, to try and direct where that those complaints should go, whether it be criminal or we should um, kind of send it off to a different group in town to handle. I, I reached out to members of Newari to be can, continue the discussion and to find ways to make connections in the BIPOC community. As mentioned, you, in the six pillars of community policing, building trust and legitimacy is a foundational principle to establishing meaningful relationships, uh, within the community. And that's something that, um, we've always tried to do, but it's something that we have to continue to do because it's always an ongoing process. Um, it's not something that you can establish these relationships and kind of sit back. It's, it's just, it's an ongoing process. Um, and we want to strive to do that consistently, uh, as we go forward.
Chief, if I could just stop you there before we get to the next recommendation, is there a way to share screen? Uh, cause I know these are coming fast and we have this information in front of us. Does Sandy have that?
I can hold up and get it for you in a minute, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. And then we can just go through.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, is this what was in the packet?
Yes, it is. It's, I have it here, um. That's page four, uh, five and six, six.
Page six. Yes, sir. Bring it right up.
If that works, I'll try to see it on the.
Can I, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Um, Chief, thank you so much. This is so, um, this is great, uh, to hear about these, um, these endeavors. But I was curious about your conversations. Are these going to be ongoing, um, conversations or is there like a scheduled meetings or what's the, um, which is wonderful, by the way, but, um, so I'm curious what your, what your thought process is there?
Well, I think so with the, the, especially the A A, A A P I community, it's something that we will check in, um, with them uh, on, uh, a time to time basis and to just check in with them. Um, I've also provided them with the ability to contact me myself if anything, any needs arise. Um, and we've also volunteered to, um, speak at any meetings or any discussions that they want. So it's hopefully the beginning of, um, a continuous relationship that we have open communication. Um, that's what I think our discussion talked about and it's something I think that we anticipate happening.
Thank you. And again, sorry to interrupt you, um, you're train of thought. But it seems that we're on the recommendation for the, um, Citizen Academy. Is that correct?
Um, the first one, I think we're, we're at the recommendation was, uh, stakeholders sponsors of serious conversations.
Right.
Which is public police officers. Um, so I'm going to work with the town manager, assistant town manager of operations and outside experts to develop a framework for the discussions between the police officers, members of the BIPOC community. Um, we'll also participate in town sponsored community conversations about racing and policing as appropriate. The next one, the next recommendation would be find ways to educate the public on the role of police officers, um, such as through a citizens academy. We are planning a citizens academy for the fall of two thousand twenty one. It's something I think that I had spoken with the town manager on and my goals, um, prior to COVID hitting. So it's obviously when COVID, um, was around, we weren't able to do that. So that's something that got pushed off and it's something that um, we'll start working on for the fall. We do have the Junior Police Academy, which will be held, uh, June twenty first to the twenty fourth. Um, and I, and obviously it's something that I will keep you apprised of on about the Citizens Police Academy. I'm also scheduled to speak to the North Hill Community in November, um, to talk about all things about the police department. Um, from the structure, the organization to social justice and to what other, uh, topics that they want to talk to. But it's going to be a, a pretty big meeting from what I understand and um, it's something that, you know, I think we look forward to doing. Um, the next recommendation was to emphasize training on mental health issues, threshold inquiries and de-escalation techniques.
Sorry, sorry to interrupt, Chief, Chair Burley. Do you mind if I, I just, I didn't know what the Citizen Academy was?
Sure. And, and I just, I know there's a lot of information here and that's fine. What I would like to do, I guess I'll set the table a little bit is to, and we'll answer that, is to get through, kind of go page to page, because there, you're correct, Lakshmi. There's a lot of information on this and I know questions will come up. So, um, but why don't we answer that question, uh, first and then we'll get through the page one.
Sure. So the Citizens Police Academy is, it's an academy that we have, uh, hold over, uh, over several weeks. And what it does is it introduces, um, the people who enrolled in this academy on how the police department works. How the policies, how that we deal with, uh, different types of scenarios. It really gives them an in-depth look at the structure, organization and the way we go about, uh, policing, uh, at this time.
Thank you.
Is, sorry, is that meant as a, like for training or is that just in for, like a, anyone can sign up or what?
Anybody, anybody can sign up. It's, um, it's almost like a, a tutorial on how the police department works. It's really an informational thing, um, which allows the people in the citizen that enrolled in this class to kind of interact with our officers. Learn about the different job functions, take, take part in some, um, classroom instruction and some practical instruction on how we do crime scenes or accident reconstruction, stuff like that. So that's how it's, it's planned out.
Thank you. Marcus?
Yeah. And is there like an alternative route for this to say, I'm sure there's so many people that won't be able to be a part of the citizens academy. So to get that information out and, um, have kind of all of that ready to go, whether it's online or through a P I O or something like that. And then I had a question, one more question just above when we were talking about, uh, meeting with uh, the BIPOC community and report back to the board in October. Um, that last part about the town sponsored kind of community conversations about race and policing as appropriate. So I just want to know what you mean by as appropriate. Does that mean it may or may not happen or like how often or what you were thinking? I'm just unders, trying to understand those two things.
Yeah. So I think what we're going to do is we go to establish those relationships and we rely on people in the community. We start those discussions, um, and see where they go. I mean, it's definitely, it's something that people want. So it's definitely going to happen, but just how it's rolled out and how we do it. And the format of that and so forth is kind of, we're trying to work on right now.
Okay. And you said you're going to give us progress on the twenty first. So between now and then, we're hoping to have, is there like a hypothetical, like one or two conversations or is there kind of a goal between now and then that, yeah, kind of you're thinking about?
Well, I obviously I think it's going to be more than one discussion. Um, but I think we'll, you know, we'll kind of gauge it when we get there and see if there's need for more, several more, maybe one more and so forth. But I think it's kind of new to where we're at. So kind of rolling it out and, and working with the different groups and, and the town manager and assistant town managers set these ups. Um, then we'll, we'll make a plan going forward. But I do see it being at least more than one anyways.
Okay. And then the first part of the question about the citizens academy for the people that won't be able to make it, um, that can't make it as far as getting the information out and, um, getting that, um, easily accessible and um, to the community or what, what your vision is on that for those people that can't make those days.
Well, so I think it's, it's, one, we'll look at the availability of actually doing it online or maybe Zoom or something of that nature. That's something we'll look at. But this is something that we're going to be doing on a yearly basis or maybe uh, a couple of times a year so that there'll be room for, um, people if they don't get in the first class. You know, if it's limited in participants, then they might be able to get in the one the next, the next year. So, uh, we'll take a look at those options and, um, we'll advise back.
Thank you. Um, and I guess, and I'm looking at these, I know they're going to be questions maybe. So why don't we go with the recommendation? And then I'll open it up for questions instead of doing page by page, because I know there are quite a few questions. So uh, moving on to the mental health issues.
Well, the recommendation was to emphasize training on mental health issues, threshold inquiries, de-escalation techniques and the impact of implicit bias on policing. Uh, further de-escalation training and non-life threatening conditions should also be considered. Um, all officers have completed de-escalation mental health techniques for first responders this past year. De-escalation is emphasized in every use of force training scenario. Training tactics include ver, verbal communication, slowing down the pace of the incidents, warnings, waiting out a person, creating distance and cover and calling in additional resources to assist. In terms of the mental health, I, you know, I really believe that we have a, uh, robust, um, mental health uh, application for our law enforcement, uh, here in town. Um, and as you can see with the training that we've had and with the recent addition of the community outreach officer um, and the embedded social worker, um, these are ways to enhance our response. These are our, our ways to enhance um, getting to these people before they're getting crisis, having the resources in place, doing the follow-ups, doing the visits so that we don't get to that, that location or that place where they're in crisis and it could, you know, become some type of, um, you know, assaultive or, you know, combative, a dangerous situation for the family and for those responding. Um, the, 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 our embedded clinical social worker, uh, and the community outreach officer, not including, um, the May stats, have had outreach contacts with s- sixty-six different times in the community since uh, December. And as I said, it's important because, uh, such intervention can help address issues proactively and prior to that individual going into crisis. Um, it also allows our embedded clinician as community outreach officer to create positive interaction, develops trust with the family and the individuals who are in crisis. Threshold inquiries, uh, we talked about, that was one of the, uh, segments that was in our in-service training this year, which is part of our mandatory in-service training. So there was a, uh, section on threshold inquiry and, uh, contacts with individuals. Um, and that's something we will continue to train on, uh, separately from our in-service training.
Thank you. Uh, questions on that area? Lakshmi.
Um, thank you so much, uh, Matt and, uh, and Chief. I, I just had a, a question on the terminology. I was a little confused by, um, when you mentioned de-escalation, I, I think like the, kind of the vernacular or whatever the, you know, kind of the popular thinking of what de-escalation means is, is that both, right? The person being investigated or the, or the officer will also kind of minimize any sort of violent or, you know, outcome. But it sounds like this is more about the person being investigated. Can you just explain what, or like, what is de-escalation, I guess, is, or what is your perception or, or, um, what's your definition of de-escalation?
Well, so for, for de-escalation, it, it comes i- in two ways. So, um, we want to have the ability to, um, if we show up on a scene, we're called to a scene. Um, and somebody is at a level that could be assaultive. Um, what we will train our officers to do is to try and get them back down, to try and get them to de-escalate. Uh, we want them to come down so that we can make this a scenario where you know, everything ends up at the end of the day, everybody's safe, nobody's hurt. Um, so it's, it's twofold. It's one to work with the person, um, who, who's called or we responded to, um, to de-escalate them if they're at a higher level, but it's also for our officers, um, to know that, hey, listen, um, and it's hard to describe, but if they're, uh, if they're at a certain level, um, and they come down, we can't remain at the same level. We have to come down with them. So that's how we mean by de-escalation. So it's kind of a twofold question. It's getting them to come down and then when they come down, we need to come down with them. So we're not still at that, that heightened level when they're at a lower level.
Yeah, thank you. That's really helpful because I think it, it sounded more like it was more about the person that you were, you know, having to deal with, having to de-escalate. But it's very good to hear that there's also a mutual, you know, kind of situational, like let's try and get both sides, right, to think about. Um, so thank you very much. That's very helpful.
Great. Thank you. Any further questions? Okay. Next recommendation?
Sure. Just on one more thing on that, all officers and dispatches have recently completed implicit bias training. A sergeant and lieutenant attendant affair impartial policing train, the trainer event in May. They'll be certified to use the materials to train the entire, entire department on fair and impartial policing training this summer or early fall.
Marcus?
Yeah. And just piggybacking off that, Chief, um, as far as that training that everyone has completed recently, is that just once a year? Is that something that happens more often? And if it's not, should it happen more often to, because I know when I do my CPR trainings and things like that and it's every year, every two years, you can get a little rusty and, and forget some things and, and, and that's what I've dealt, what, what I've dealt with when it's come to those kinds of things. So and I know the, the less amount of times that you do things, it's a, um, not saying that you necessarily forget everything, but I feel like a more frequent, um, training or reminder, you know, subcourses or something like that would be beneficial. I just didn't know what that process was like.
So it will be based on available classes, but it's something that we will do yearly, um, probably more than once a year. I, I assume and I imagine from what I've seen from the Mass Police Training Council is that there will be, um, courses or segments of our in-service mandatory in-service training that will touch on implicit bias, racial profiling and so forth. And then we'll offer, um, some type of training that will touch on those areas of topics, um, depending on the need, the base or, um, whatever training is available. So we'll be, um, definitely a, a yearly thing, but it'd be something will supplement other training, um, that's, that's mandatory for us. So we'll, I can't guarantee every year it's going to be more than once, but from how I envision that, the way that it's going to roll out from the M P T C and the, after the post-commission that um, there will be multiple, uh, trainings that will be available for us.
Okay. So the, the other one would be in-house, the one that the
Correct.
yearly one and then the in-house you would do something. Got it. A little bit more. Okay. That, that'd be awesome. Thank you. And I should follow back up on that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Um, the next recommendation prioritized leaving civil service to gain greater flexibility.
Sorry, can I interrupt? I, I'm raising a hand and I'm realizing the hands aren't really seen. So I apologize, uh, Chief. Um, one of the things that was talked about last night at Newari was, you know, all of these different trainings that you're doing are really important. And we are really appreciative that, that they're being scheduled and that, um, that they're parts of, um, the professional development that you're working on with folks. Uh, one of the observations that was made, uh, last evening by Robin, Robin Abreshamian was that, um, that there needs to be something at some point that's more holistic or sort of integrative. And I don't know whether that exists or not. It's something that we've talked about, sort of looking, surveying to see if it's out there and what it might be. Um, one of the other things that I think of that I think goes back to Marcus's comment is, um, in the hospital world with the joint commission, um, work that comes for the hospital every three years is they're being recertified. There is some ongoing, you know, like a daily thing that people do that's like a one or two minutes quick shot. And it almost feels at some point like something similar to that will need to be developed for police. So I just offer those as you're just scanning and seeing different things that it might be worth thinking about those.
No, definitely. And I, and I think if anything that we can do to, to make our police department a better police department, you know, more inclusive, um, is something that we, we will take very seriously and we'll look at doing.
Thank you, Chief. Okay. Civil service.
Um, so obviously this is something that, you know, I know we met with the select board a couple of years ago about this being a priority, uh, for the police department. So obviously this is something that, you know, I know we met with the select board a couple of years ago about this being a priority, uh, for the police department. Um, for myself. Um, and you know, I think obviously this is something that's, that's, that's ongoing. Um, during contract negotiations, um, and it's obviously the, the. Collective bargaining is, is one of the things that we'll have to deal with, with doing this, but it remains a priority for myself and. I know for the town manager, um, and the select board that this is something that we want to pursue.
Thank you. So, okay, next?
Yep, implement all the local components of the new state police reform law wants additional guidance is made available. Um, following that, the select board should identify if any local policy to practice more on additional viewer change or whether. Additional reforms should be made. Um, the post-commission members have been appointed and will continue to monitor the progress of the commission. Um, and attend public meetings as needed. Um, I don't, I'm, I'm not sure on the rollout of the post-commission and, and when things will get in place. Um, but things are starting to slowly, um, trickle out and some guidance is starting to trickle out and we'll obviously. Um, follow all those recommendations and guidelines and I'll report back to the town manager on those as well. Um, and we'll continue to, to keep up on, um, that post-commission, um, as it, it becomes available to us.
Think, uh, Marcus?
Um, as far as the post, post-commission, I know we talked previously about one half being in July, December, then possibly next year. And when we think about that, I know we don't have the answers yet, but are we trying to view the post-commission more? As whatever their ceiling may be, maybe our floor or something closer to there and we're trying to strive above that. So I know we also might have mentioned trying to maybe not get ahead of it, but trying to put something in place so we like, we have. Um, aspirationally where we want to be without needing that right now. Is there a way to kind of? To be more proactive in that or? Is the only way, which I, I don't, I don't think it is, to wait until that is, um, sent to us and then we go from there. Um, I know we've, I've talked about on a couple of meetings before, we just want to know your thought about that.
Yeah, so certainly things that we can address, that we think we can address, we, we definitely will. One of the things I caution about is, is trying to get ahead or get beyond where they are. And if they come out. And something that they're putting out is totally different what, than what we're doing. And it doesn't match what, um, if we do it beforehand, it doesn't match what they, they feel their guidelines will be. Um, you worry about any issues that you might have in terms of the policies that you put out and what could happen if something. You know. Liability wise and so forth. So, um, I, I think as we go forward, we're looking at what we can do. Um, making adjustments, um, as they become available, but I think some of the, the policies that we're looking at. Um, we're addressing to the highest standards that we have now available to us. Um, and I think if it's something that we think we can go higher and the recommendations made. Or the suggestions made, maybe it's something that we can reach out to, um, the state. Or the post-commission or the mass chiefs and kind of get their feedback on it. Um, because before we put policies and into place. Um, we usually go with the guidance from the mass chiefs or the mass police training council because. They have a process in which they're reviewed. You know, by their staff and their legal staff. So those are important to keep in mind as we do go forward. We want to make sure we're staying in step with them. And not stepping outside those. Uh, but if we feel that there's something that we can do proactively. To get us to a different level and, you know, we send those off and we feel that. That they feel that that's okay and that you're, you're in an okay place for that considering what might be coming, then it's something that we can definitely look at.
That makes sense. Thank you, Chief. Lakshmi?
Thank you. Sorry, I just wanted to add to, um, the, this, uh, this, this progress, this, um, unbelievable. You know, how we think about the post-commission and, and how you're thinking about integrating that. And I would, I would like to suggest or even volunteer if you want any help from, you know, if you need a liaison or any sort of. You know, um, from the select board side as part of that conversation, like I think, um, you know, we're more than happy to help. Um, that would be, I, I think, a, a great way to kind of integrate where. Where you are now and thinking about what the state standards are and as you collect data and as we can kind of integrate that together. So. If you, if you would like to see a liaison or some sort of. Uh, if there's an opportunity for that sort of, um, uh, you know. Uh, cooperation or, you know, collaboration. Happy to help.
Thank you. Okay, um, next. Use of force?
Uh, let's see. So we have. For the review of the use of force policy, um, again, it's after the peace officer standards and training commission issues a model policy. Determines whether NPD's policy should include a stronger focus, focus on de-escalation. Listen, so as we, as we indicated before, um. This review, one will occur, occur after the post-commission has issued the model policy. Currently, we're up to date with the, the model that the mass chiefs and the mass police training council have issued. Um, and reviewed, um, and used as a template across the state. De-escalation. In the use of force policy, words in terms of de-escalation. Um, as I, but as I mentioned before, our focus in a lot of our training, de-escalation is, is a, is a huge focus and. There have been some recommendations that, um, some wording that we're looking into to make, see if we can. Add that to our use of force policy prior to the model policy coming out. Um, and that's something that we're reviewing now and, uh, will continue to do so and. Well, you know, we'll take those recommendations look at, but I think it's, um, it's important to understand that obviously use of force and. Um, de-escalation go hand in hand and they're vital to. What we do as police officers because we want to make sure that we're. Doing everything in our ability to protect the lives of the people we serve and to protect the lives of our officers. Um, and there's nothing more important than that. And, um, that'll be one of the main things that we're looking at. Going forward and hopefully that, that template is out soon.
Great. Okay.
Let's see, so the next one I have.
Sorry, sorry, Chairman Burley, just one more comment, Chief. I, I just, I, I'm, I'm, this is fantastic, but I'm, I'm curious if you've had any conversations with Campaign Zero. In terms of use of force policy, because I know they're a great resource. For thinking through like how to incorporate practices and, and we actually have a Needham resident who's, um, um. Interning with them right now. So, um, he's kind of an expert in the field. So just putting that out there.
Sure. I, you know, when I've looked at Campaign Zero, it's something that, um. You know, if you scroll down and you look at the, the mission, um, and what they talk about. Um, it's, it's focusing, it does focus on defunding and abolishing policing. Um, and that's something that, um, obviously. We don't feel is appropriate considering the need, but the eight can't wait is something that we looked at early on. And we took those guiding principles and we put them into our policy and made those decisions. Um, but again. A lot of the use of force in, in those policies and those recommendations, we're. We're really tied into the guidance we get from the state, the, that oversees, um, the policies. Um, the MPTC and then guidance from the legal representatives from the mass chiefs of police. Um, that we use as guidance and, um, you know, so those are, those are the things that we're kind of bound to do. Um, obviously if there's something outside that makes sense and we can do that, we'll definitely look into it.
Thank you, Chief. Okay.
Um, recommendation on, and this is from the Tidwell report, the NPD policy on, uh, threshold inquiries. So. The NPD, we added a handcuffing special reporting feature to all incident reports, which will allow for tracking of incidents. That individuals were handcuffed. Information on the, uh, incidents of handcuff will be included in the annual public safety report. In addition, the MPTC and annual criminal law and criminal procedure updates and training. Um, NPD will ensure that the topic of threshold inquiries is addressed in training on an annual basis. And obviously I spoke to earlier about the in-service training that all officers had that segment on that. And it's something that we will provide additional training, um, in-house within the department.
Okay, and Chief, I see that on the next page. Just could you briefly, because these are pretty much, um, post-commission, post-commission, but just. One was the, uh, select board serves the oversight body and it says that the select board will, I'm sorry. We have the select board service oversight body till the post-commission role is defined and. That's, that's correct. And then about the key enforcement data, uh, there was a dashboard, uh, if you could just briefly touch about that. I know we put. Numbers together on that.
What page is that on?
Uh, that was right under, um. De-escalation and.
Okay.
Hit number two, yeah.
Okay, have the, uh.
In your packet than what you have. No, that was. Keep scrolling the other way.
The recommendation. Page two of the recommendations.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, okay. Have the select board serve as the oversight body, the Needham Police Department until the post-commission role is defined. Um, the select board will serve as the oversight, uh, oversight body until the post-commission role is more clearly defined. The report regularly make publicly available key enforcement data broken down by race, gender and residency to identify potential disparities. And monitor the trends over time. Uh, the MPD enforcement data dashboards have been compiled for two thousand eighteen, nineteen and twenty. The dashboard will continue to be refined and reviewed based on stakeholder input. This dashboard will be issued annually in February or March timeframe.
Great.
And then the next one, we talk about the legal, uh, the regional collaboration with the Needham and Police Department and the Dedham Police Department. And Riverside Community Care to provide clinical support services. Uh, that was approved at town meeting, town meeting to do that for an additional year, starting in July. So that's something that. Um, we will continue to do for the next year and we will provide statistics and, and feedback on that. As well as part of our reports.
Great. Okay, continue with the Tidwell.
Yep, okay, uh. Recommendation, the Needham Police Department Policy Internal Affairs. Uh, this policy governs the conduct of the department's internal investigations and notes that. To allow, to a large degree, the public image of this department is determined how well it responds to allegations misconduct. Against the department's or its officer. Uh, the Tidwell report suggests MPD review its IA practices with respect to internal affairs investigations. In the following areas. Um, it talks about eyewitness identification. And so this policy governs the conduct of eyewitness ident- identification. Um, this policy is being reviewed and adjusted as needed. Um, I'll report on that review back, uh, in, in October. And it's important to understand we had two tenants. That completed a internal affairs certification course, which is a forty-hour course. Uh, they completed, I want to say it was in March. Um, so we'll be able to, um, use that. That training and certification in future investigations. Follow-up investigations, um. While, while the policy doesn't print patrol officers to go follow investigations. I'll ensure that the officers are trained on the appropriate investigative methods. So we've, um, created a. A summary which we, when I meet with the lieutenants every Monday. So we're able to look through the reports to show, to see if the appropriate follow-up has been conducted. So we review those reports on Monday, um, and then the lieutenant who's in charge of. That responsibility will go back to those officers or supervisors and ensure that the follow-ups are being completed as necessary.
A question, Lakshmi?
Just, I guess, a, a quick question on both of those, um, for you, Chief, is that what, like, what, I guess, what are your metrics here? For both for kind of the, the eyewitness processes and the, um, follow-up? As, like, you, you, you're mentioning these meetings, but what are you doing to, I don't know, to track these things? Is there tracking? Is there?
So eyewitness identification, it's a policy, it governs, it governs how we do, um. Witness identification of subjects. So it's not something that you would have a meeting on. Um, eyewitness identification in terms of. Um, a show-up ID, a photo array. Are really infrequent here in town. Um, but the policies we've worked with. Obviously the state and there's another, the group, I'm, it's, I'm losing off the top of my mind, but, um. To ensure that the policy and the requirements and the process in which we do identifications. Um, whether it be show-up identifications, photo arrays, there's, um. Specific instructions, um, on how to do that, specific language that has been. Um, sponsored and supported by the Innocence Project, um, in terms of how we do those. Um, interactions and, and show-ups and so forth. So there is a form. Um, that has to be followed and used during these identification, uh, processes. So the policy itself. Dictates how the officers, supervisors and so forth. Um, manage and, and do those identification, uh, processes.
Okay, because yeah, there, there has been a lot of research about, right, about eyewitnesses and, and. Pro, like, how are you following up on that? And yeah, it may not happen often, but when there is a mistake, it can be, you know. Highly problematic as we've seen. So, um, just thinking about what, what sorts of, you know, training are you doing? Or how are you making sure that there's no, um, you know, no repeat, I guess, of, of thinking about these sorts of. False eyewitnesses or, um. Problematic and, and following up on the processes that have, that have, um, occurred. Um, so it's, go ahead, sorry.
It's fine. So the follow-up process is something that we do in terms of. Our annual, our meetings on Mondays where we see the reports that that was done to make sure, um, there is training that is. Um, it's not annually in terms of, uh, in-service training, but when we reissue. Um, we review and reissue our policy, um, on eyewitness identification or, or other policies. There is a. Um, we do have new software that tracks it that the officers have read it, that have gone through it and there's a, there's a test after it. So we're able to make sure that they're reading the policy, that they understand the policy and they answer the questions. Um, and that's something that we do, um. An in-house training as well. They might get some other training outside that as well. Our detectives who do most of our, um, photo arrays and, and identifications. Um, receive training on that yearly, um, through their detectives in service. And the NORPAC task force does training which talks about, um, witness identification.
Thank you. Marcus?
Yeah, I just quickly want to go back to the dashboard. I saw that it's going to be presented annually. Um, but it would, would it be, um, real, in real time as far as monthly or? Um, by the week or something like that to get more of a consistent, uh, pulse on what's going on? Or is it only an annual, you compile the data? I just want to just be sure because if it's not like that, is that something that we can make a possibility?
I think that's something we'll look at. We're in the process of, of hiring a, an analyst from, for the police department, so. That'll be able to take all this data, analyze it, publish it. Um, so I think that's something we'll definitely look out at the frequency of what we do. Uh, depending on, on. You know, the time of work it takes, the, the difficulty and so forth. It's, we're kind of waiting to see who we get to. Fill that position and then go from there, but it's something we'll definitely take a look at. Um, and determine what's the best case scenario and putting that stuff out.
Yeah, I think it just, it definitely, when you look at big picture, it makes more sense to have a consistent pulse on it. And I think it's going to save you. More time in the long run to, whether it's monthly or weekly. I, I'm sure. It may be definitely more work, but when you're going back to try to get data stats or, um, get information. Um, I'm just looking at, go ahead, I see you want to say something.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think monthly is definitely, um, something that we could look at, but weekly is probably not. Um, feasible, but I definitely could take a look at it monthly because.
Okay.
They're going to do it anyways, um, you know, so if it's something we put out. We can do a monthly and then have a final report at the end of the year as well.
Yeah, I think that'd be better, um, and that we can follow up and talk more about that at a later time, but absolutely.
Great, thank you, Marcus.
Okay, so courtesy of the public, obviously. I'm committed to ensuring that offices are courteous and respectful. Um, and I think that's something where. It's kind of the building block of, of what we do, and if they're not courteous. Um, and professional to the people we serve. It, it chips away at the trust that you're trying to build, and it chips away at the foundation and. The, the trust and the legitimacy of the police department. So that's something that, um, we take seriously and that we try and address. Um, as, as reported or seen or, um, an overall message that we deliver, um, consistently throughout the year.
Lakshmi.
Um, just a quick question on that. Have you heard, have you had report or any sort of feedback on that, Chief? Like, I'm just curious what. Where that's kind of coming from or.
I don't know, that, that was out of the tidwell report, um, and I think that had something to do with. There was some question, um, and obviously, um, there's two sides to the story because. Um, you know, obviously, there's different variations, but that, they didn't answer, that the officers didn't answer questions. Um, when asked. And then the officers, you know, indicated that they did answer questions and. You know, there is some information that, that was in there that did indicate that they did answer, so. Um, you know, that's where that comes from, from the tidwell report. Um, and I think it has to do with that part of the scenario that was, that happened. That's where that recommendation came from.
Okay, and I mean, it is, it's kind of like, you know, when you think of like a business environment, you think about, uh, you know. How friendly are the people? Like, what kind of, you know, survey sort of situation of friendliness, courteousness, right? Like, is there any sort of. You know, how was your experience, I guess, is the.
Well, there is a, there is a yearly survey that, uh, feedback, um, that the town conducts and. In general, we've been, we've had very high numbers and very high reviews about. Uh, our service and, um, our interactions with our police department. You know, a lot of times we get some negative feedback when somebody gets a ticket. And. I can understand why, um, but I, they don't, they, I don't get complaints when they get a warning. Let's, let's say that, so.
Um, just another, sorry, quick comment before we move on to the next topic, because. Just going back to the, the training you mentioned around eyewitnesses, and the reason I, I'm bringing this up is that I've heard from several people in town. About when there has been complaints from people in the community. What about, you know, let's say there's a person of color that's been going to their door, or is just even walking the neighborhood. Of these like suspicious people, right? And I, you know, so there was a, an individual who, um, who contacted me, who said there was a. A young black man going around the neighborhood trying to do, for, you know, doing work for WGBH. And he reported that there was a lot of really, um, suspicious, unfriendly people. And it, he was nervous, right, being in, in Needham. And so I don't know if you get phone calls like about that sort of thing, and then, you know, how do you, how do you manage that? Because. I, I, I guess, yeah.
We do, and you know, I think we talked about this on the onbo, onboarding process where we talked about. We have a general order that went out, um, that if people call up about a suspicious person. Uh, dispatchers are required to ask different questions. Um, what specific actions are making them suspicious. Um, and if they can't, if they really can't give anything other than that they might be a person of color or, or so forth, then. Our dispatcher will contact our supervisor and our supervisor, um, has the authority not to send somebody to that call. Um, so we've put out a general order for, for our dispatchers, our officers and our supervisors to handle situations like that, but. Uh, you know, there are, in some occasions, we do get calls like that.
And Chief, that order came under your leadership, is that correct? That's somewhat fairly new or?
That's correct.
Okay.
Last year or two.
Right, I remember when that came out. Thank you. Oh, yeah, I have to scroll through two, Marcus, yeah.
Yeah, so has it ever been a case where that has happened and then. They take it into their own hands if you haven't sent somebody and they wouldn't address the person or that ever, has that happened or what has that? Um, led to, I guess.
No, not, not to mind, that has not.
Okay, I just wondered, I was like, okay, well, the police aren't going to come, then I'll go talk to this person.
They might get upset with us, um, but they don't, they haven't done anything, um, outside to the individual who's.
Okay.
Might be in the neighborhood.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, identification, name, badge, number?
So we do have a policy on that, um, and then this again is something that came up because of, um, the tidwell report. I want to say recently, two years ago, um, we. Required all officers to wear name tags on the uniforms, something that's never been done. Um, and so again, this is one of those, those, uh, instances where there's two sides to the story. Um, with that, because. There were, um, reports of and handwritten notes that indicated the officer's name and badge number that were given. Um, to Mr. Henry, so, um, in general, that's something that we do. Our offices are very. Aware of, very familiar with that law, that you, um, required to provide your badge. Um, your, your badge number and name, and that's something that, um, is definitely. They're, they're getting that information on a yearly basis at least, and it's something that they, they hammer alone in the, in the academy and in-service. Um, and during the onboarding process, when they come on here, it's something we talk about.
Great.
Um, the review and oversight, uh, or the articulation of standard of proof. So we, the, the police department will update the articulate standard of proof included in the internal affairs policy. Um, by September, so it's just a statement, um, kind of guiding us on, um. What level we need, what standard of proof we need, um, to spell out a little bit clearer than it was in that policy, and that's something that will. We've already added it in, we're just reviewing the rest of the policy to make sure that, um, we're, we're up to date.
Lakshmi.
Sorry, just a quick question, um, do, do we, is there an internal affairs? Police in, in our, in your division, or is that external? How does that?
So it, it depends on, on the circumstance, but we do have. Um, a lieutenant, two lieutenants that are assigned to internal affairs investigations. Like I mentioned before, two of them just. Um, attended a certification course. It's kind of a recertification course, because they've already, they've gone to it several years back, but. Um, they're certified as a forty-hour course to conduct internal affairs investigation. Um, and a lot of times will, uh, depending on the nature of the incident, if we have to work with the district attorney's office, we will.
So, but they're internal to the department, and so they're also internal affairs, but they have another job as well, is that?
They're lieutenants, they're lieutenants, they're, they're, they're part of my administration. Administrator staff and, and that's, that's some of their responsibilities.
Gotcha, and is that new or is that how that's always been?
It's always been.
Okay.
You know, so I was, I was, I was a head of internal affairs back in. I want to say, you know, maybe two thousand to two thousand four or five. And, you know, so yeah, there is, that's always been, um, a position within an apartment since I've been here.
Thank you, Chief. It's recording?
Yeah, the, the, so. The, the, the NB, we, we typically record. Internal affairs interviews, but with the COVID nineteen precautions. The inadequate interview room at the temporary station did not provide for an appropriate social distancing. Um, and it should be noted, in some cases, officers have legal rights which allows them to not be recorded. So that's something that, uh, we generally do. Um, but there was just kind of a. A group of issues that, you know, happened this last time, but that's something that. Um, we do do in general, but they, the officers can't deny that if they don't want to be reported. Um, they have that legal right to.
Thank you. Maybe I see the next three are related as far as, um, metrics. I know we had a discussion. About those metrics and how we should report them and looking maybe into monthly or. The best metrics to capture. Um, I don't know if you want to say more on that or if there are questions on metrics.
No, and I think the, the, I think the, you know, the metrics are kind of a work in progress, you know, and I think it's involving, you know, the town manager, assistant town manager. Trying to get the right data and metrics and, and coming up with, um, you know, those metrics that we feel. Um, you know, will meet the needs of, and, and the wants of what our, our stakeholders and our community wants, so. It's kind of an ongoing process. It might be something that takes a little while to kind of iron those out and make sure that we've got everything that's. Is needed and wanted, and, um, we'll kind of go from there, but I think it's something that we'll be working out for, for the next year or so.
Lakshmi.
Um, I just wanted to say thank you, and I'm also very happy to help with any. Um, if you need any help from the Select Board side on this endeavor, um, it's just, it's really, uh, thank you.
Great. Um, public safety report and.
I think that's something we've talked about, um, you know, we've already, we've already discussed. I don't know if anybody has any further questions on that. Um, the, publish the names of ranks in, uh, the Needham Police Department. Um, the Needham Police Department will publish an organizational chart, the names and ranks of all officers on its website by September first. Information on training will be included in the annual report. I think that's probably the easiest way to do that.
Chief, do you see, I know in some communities not Needham, you know, there've been some incidents, privacy and harassment, mostly in the cities, and. Do you find any issue with publishing that data or is that, you feel comfortable?
Well, I think the pub, public record is that the name, um, the name of the officers where you get into. Um, issues with that would be providing information on where they live or their residency and so forth. Um, any other information, but their, their names themselves are public records, so we don't have any issue with that. Um, but I do concur, there have been issues, um. I've had people threaten me and my family, um, where we had to have officers outside my house for a while. Um, this was way back when I was in detectives, but, um, so it does happen, and that's why I think. You know, we try and hold some of that stuff a little bit close to our vest, because we do worry about our profession and what we do and our families, um, so. But again, the name, i- it is public record, so we're, we're happy to publish that.
Great. We discussed metrics, we discussed de-escalation. Use of force, these seem.
Yep.
I'll let you have it, Chief, I don't know if.
I have my hand out still, sorry, I didn't. Don't worry about it. No, it's okay, just chime in real quick, I think you. When you scroll back up a little bit, where we talk about the training, uh, being published in the annual report again, I just want to go back to. How we talked about monthly and, um, I don't, whether the trainings and things, I think just a better grasp in shorter term. Um, goals for those instead of annual, I think will just do a better service for all of us.
We can look at that.
Just want to incorporate that in there, if we can. And like you said, it's, it may take a lot of work and, and there's some things you have to probably think about more, but I just think, when I think about community and I think about. You know, that, um, that communication part and where we are in that transparency, I think. The more times we hit back and we, and we know kind of how often things are happening or not, not happening, I think it's just. Would be better.
Yeah, I think, so I think some of it might be able to do it that way.
But not everything.
You know, but yeah, like the annual in-service training, that starts from, um. September and goes all the way to June, so we send a couple offices each week. Um, so that's kind of, um, cumbersome in that terms, but we, we publish what the, the. Mandatory in-service was, we, we'd publish what the classes were that they were required by the state to do and, and indicate that. All of our officers from the chief on down received this training, and this is the curriculum that was sent out by the Mass Police Training Council. That might be more appropriate for the yearly report, where some of the individualized training, in-house training and so forth. Which we do as a group, might be more relative to the month, so we'll take a look at that and see.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, top of page six, okay?
Okay, so the, we review the use of force policy, we've talked about that. Policies related to mental health, complaints and disciplinary procedures, bias in hiring should be audited and reviewed. These policies and revised, reviewed after the model policies issued by the Post-Commission. Um, so, and those were, were technically, usually what we do is we get the policies from the mass chiefs or. Um, some of the surrounding towns or the MBTC, um, and that's where we keep them up to date. And then we'll have to make additional adjustments based on any recommendations from the Post-Commission.
Okay. You have some stats there about. Your officers.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, um. You know, we have a, a priority on our mental health response in town and. Um, just, just last week or the week before, we had our officers presenting, um. Our mental health model, um, to other departments in, um, Norfolk County and beyond because of. How beneficial and how, um. Productive it's been. Um, so, you know, when I look at what we do in mental health, I see it as above the curve. And obviously, Massachusetts is nat, and you know, nationally above, ahead of the curve on this. Um, and, you know, when we look at what our officers have done for training, um. You know, the one mind pledge, which is just a, it's the IACP one mind pledge. Um, and I think there's roughly fifty towns and agencies that have completed it, and we've gone way and above and beyond that. Uh, but as you could see, and I know I've presented this before, so I won't go all over, you know, all of it. Um, but mental health first aid training for a hundred percent of our officers. A hundred percent of our officers have completed de-escalation mental health techniques for first responders. At the end of two thousand twenty and the beginning of two thousand twenty-one. Um, all trained in mental health first aid. Um, all, approximately fifty percent of our officers are trained in crisis intervention. We plan on training, uh, the department, but currently we're only offered two seats to this training when available. Um, COVID has delayed the availability of the classes, but we'll continue to train these officers. Um, because we understand how important it is, um. You know, because we want to be part of the, the solution to the people that are dealing with these mental health crises, so. It's, it's been, it's been, um. I'll tell you, it's been, it's been rewarding, because I think we've seen a lot of good things that have come out of it. Um, and we've been able to establish relationships, um, with people in the community that sometimes suffer from mental health issues. But they trust us, they call us, they talk to us, uh, and that's important.
And Chief, those are a lot of the, uh, domestic disputes, right, can arise from. I know there are quite a few in Needham that we don't always hear about.
Yeah, so we do, you know, so our community outreach officer doesn't only deal with mental health, they deal with substance abuse. Domestic violence, um, and, and some of those issues, so they, they kind of do a lot more than just the mental health, but. Mental health is a big component, um, and unfortunately, a lot of people with mental health, um, also suffer from. Uh, substance abuse as well, so sometimes they kind of, they cross-contaminate and we're dealing with it on two fronts.
Understood. Okay.
And then I think we've, uh, Oversight Body, we've talked to that. The, the, uh, the townwide review existing mental health.
Sorry, just. Yeah, sorry, quick question though, um, because you had mentioned the Post-Commission and what, you know, I know that's still in the works. But does the Post-Commission have like individual town, um, like assignments? Or is it just a statewide commission, or how will that work with, with your department specifically?
Um, the way I understand it, if, um. So the Post-Commission is statewide, um, and a lot of times, so from, from what I'm understanding, if there's an issue. So the Post Commission is statewide, um, and a lot of times, so from from what I'm understanding, if there's an issue. Where there's been a complaint or, um, an assault or, you know. Your excessive use of force or something of that nature, any complaint that we have to take that information and send it to the Post Commission. And they look at it, investigate it, they might refer some of the lower level ones back. We're not sure on that yet, um, but they'll be the over oversight. Um, for that that type of issues and they'll they'll have the final decision even over civil service, so. They have ri- wide-ranging authority, uh, from the way that the law is written.
So if something happened, would it go through, it would go through your department's like internal affairs?
So there'll there'll be, there'll be a reporting mechanism, so they can report it directly to the Post Commission. Or they can report it to us, but we're required by the new law to report it to the Post Commission once it comes in.
Okay, so it's there won't be like a post-commission liaison there, you're just the post-commission.
I don't know how that's going to break out. I don't know how they're going to work that. It's kind of. You know, the way laws are written and, you know, they kind of put things out and and with not a lot of detail, so we're kind of working through that, but. Um, that's the general, um, you know, setup of how it's supposed to be.
Okay, so it sounds like it's it's unfolding too, right? You'll you'll know more by next month.
The law is very clear, the law is very clear, the structure is a little bit unclear right now and that's what. Uh, we're waiting to see, uh, how that that plays out.
Okay.
Thank you. And chief, the timeline on that again, what, when do you expect some clarity? Is it fall?
I would say, you know, I I would say by hopefully by the end of the summer is what we're we're hoping on. You know, you know, some of the requirements are July and some of the requirements are are at the end of this year, so. They're going to have to do some, you know, you know, shortly, so we anticipate from the information we anticipate, we're hoping by. You know, end of summer, early fall, we'll have some some a clearer clearer definition of of what, how this is going to roll out.
Great, thank you.
Sorry, one more question about, sorry, just following up on that, so that that sounds great. It sounds like it's headed in that direction with the state coordination. But in the interim, or I guess what's the process been thus far? If there's an issue, does it, where does that get reported to? Or I mean, should there be a stopgap or interim process?
So if a complaint comes in, we, um, we take the complaint, it's assigned to eternal affairs. And we investigate it. Um, I meet with Kate regularly, um, and we discuss those. Issues and, you know, we kind of go from there. If we have to make notification to the board, we do. And, you know, so that's, but now with, you know, the select board being the oversight. You know, for the police department, I imagine that if we get complaints, I'll pass them up, you know, on to Kate and and she'll pass them on. To the board.
So it'll go to to us, to the select board first before the Post Commission, or is that, I guess, how does this?
So once the Post Commission is. Established, the complaints will go to the Post Commission, they do the investigation and then they'll come back. Um, and then I'll report the findings to to the town manager.
Okay. Okay, so, um, but where, so where does the select board sit in that process then?
Well, so the Post Commission is going to do the investigation, they're going to come back with. You know, a finding of of what that is. And then what'll happen is when we get those findings, I'll talk to the town manager and then whatever. Action needs to be taken, obviously the town manager is going to act on that and report up to the board.
Right, that's the oversight.
Thank you.
Okay, um, SRO.
Yeah, I know.
Marcus.
I was just pointing to Mary Ann, she had her hand up, I just saw.
Mary Ann.
I was just going to say in response to Lakshmi's question, the the issue with the select board is the select board is the stopgap. Between now and the Post Commission, so what John didn't say, but. Is that he hasn't had a complaint come to him since it's been assigned that the select board has been a stopgap, at least that's my assumption. Or we would have heard about it. Just to confirm, thank you.
Thanks for the clarification, Mary Ann. Okay, uh, SRO.
You know. We look at at some of the the response from Dr. Gudicantson. How important this position is, um. You know. It's not an enforcement position and quite honestly, we have very little. Interaction in terms of enforcing the law. A lot of the issues that, um, arise in the school are handled by the school itself. But we're up there, it's it's critical not only to born the safety and security, the well-being of the students and visitors. I've always said that. Having the ability to interact and create late relationships with our younger generation and. Their ability to see officers in a different light than that pure enforcement model. Is something that will help build the foundation for those relationships that. Go forward as they get older and and building that trust and legitimacy within the police department. And if you're able to start when they're younger and they have this. History of going through the the schools and seeing the good that these officers do. It it really is, it really is a huge. Part of of what we do and and how important it is and, um, you know, if you just look at some of the key activities. You know, advising is in assisting the administration with issues of residency, truancy. Providing training guidance on school safety, working and consulting with students, families, administrators, counselors. Issues of domestic violence, sexual assault, cyberbullying. You know, advising school administration about staff on school safety, emergency management. Developing respectful and nurturing relationships with family and students. Advised the public and private school administrator and staff about issues of student safety and security. You know, so I mean, I think it's, you know. Some, I'll give you a couple that you can see there, but you can see some of the things that RSROs do that you might not be aware of that. They they were able to deliver food to families and 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 housing do not have transportation. They've brought students to doctor's appointments, provided resources to families. The SROs are caught up between the school and the community. He or she has on many occasions brought much-needed material supplies to home, including wifi hotspots, even picking up children who missed their buses. Yeah, it's a present of support in our school community and demonstrates not to be afraid of the police. The president actually reduces stress and anxiety about police because of the relationship is so positive. They teach multiple classes each year to students. That include police and the justice system. They provide instruction, serve as a resource and wellness class, science classes, American law classes. The SO lives the vision of the community policing and positive relationships. They're prepared, trained and ready to de-escalate situations. The the high school is a deep relationship of trust with some of our most. Disconnected disenfranchised students, many of these relationships are with students of color. And he is among the important list of people that they trust and seek out to talk for advice and to confide in. They're reassuring presence. Obviously, Rocket, the the support dog. Is is a star, so. You know, so he could probably do the job himself, you know, but, um, but I think this shows you, um. What this is, um. How important this position is because it's not about police work, it's about developing these relationships. And building trust with our community, um, and our staff and the the teaching staff, it's just. I can't tell you how much positive feedback and, um, we get, uh, from these positions, so. This is really one of the best things we've probably done, uh, and policing has done in a long time.
Thank you, chief. Uh, Lakshmi.
Um, so chief, my my kids have all met, um, Officer Rocket and are definitely in love with the dog, so. It's a very, very powerful, uh, uh, officer you have on their staff, on your staff. Just a suggestion for you, you know, I I think, um. Just like the dashboard for reporting like what you do, I think it would be helpful to have some of this data also be shared. You know, maybe on the dashboard, um, to show, you know, some of just what you talked about, because I think that would be really helpful to see. How and and that would be good for your department as well, just to talk about what, you know, community activities you're doing. To, you know, and to have that, um, awareness for for everyone, so. Um, so if you, you know, you might want to include like a school, um, reporting.
We could do that. Some of the stuff that we have, you know, we don't. Probably wouldn't do because we don't want someone to be identified that's getting needs of services, but the other stuff we do, um, we definitely could could put out there.
True, I think it's one of the best assets in the high school and I, you know, speak from. Speaking with a lot of the children there and just as you said, and it's nice to have it laid out in front of us of all the things. That are seen and not seen, so, um, I think it's a terrific job in that, in that department. Um, questions on the SRO? Okay, um, is this, was that the final?
It is.
Accreditation, yeah?
Yep, accreditation, um. We obviously is something that we've considered, um, it's been a long goal of the department to participate in the accreditation process. We have been, um, constrained by staff resource and inadequacies of the old police station. Is that at many aspects of the accreditation review process include the physical characteristics of the station. And the cap, the towns could not meet those standards, so as the new station is complete, um, we'll begin to look at the. The certification process and, um, the certification process. Is the first step to the accreditation process, so you need to be certified. Before you become accredited, so it kind of what it does, it allows you to walk through the process. And get the first part done and then you build off that to the accreditation process, so. That's something that we're definitely going to look at and have to to devote a lot of staff to to complete that.
Great, chief, thank you. I'll go to Lakshmi and then I'll ask for people's final questions or comments. Lakshmi?
So I was curious, what what does the accreditation mean? What like what does it get you to be an accredited department?
So what it does is it it the it provides you with policies, procedures. And different things within the station, the booking and so forth, that they're all, that so all the policies, um. And references and requirements are met and that those policies and requirements are updated and addressed. So you have to go through the process every, I think it's might be two or three years. So you have to, it's not, you don't get accredited once, it's a continuous process, so what it does, it allows you to maintain. That level that where you were, where all your policies are in place, your station, you're meeting the requirements of the station, you're meeting the requirements of. Your evidence storage, your your equipment storage, your firearms, um, equipment and so forth, so. That that all lays out, um, you know, policies and procedures on how to handle this. And it's an ongoing process, so you maintain that level, uh, throughout that process and you continue it, so. If you didn't have that continuous accreditation process, a lot of people will get accredited. And then not keep up with the standards that are required by that and then fall back with this, this. Allows you for to continue that, to build on it and to make sure that all your policies, procedures and what you do are held to that standard.
Sorry, this is, I guess it's more of a naive question though, like, so are you accredited now? And if not, like, what what does it get? I don't know, what what's the benefit of being accredited other than kind of being up to date? Like, I'm saying that from a position of, you know, I I teach at a university and we have an accreditation process every three years, you have to go through. AACSB and you have to meet, you know, all these standards, so what, and that is like, frankly, it's like a marketing thing, right? For us to get students because you want to go to an accredited university. So what is that, what's the accreditation do for a police department?
Well, I, you know, I I don't know what it does in terms of a marketing thing, but I think what it does from an operational standpoint. It it ensures that you're up to date on everything that you need to be to provide the the services to your community so that. All your policies are in place, so that it's really almost like a a check that, hey, listen, that you are up to date on what you need to be. Um, in terms of providing those services and making sure that, um, your policies are up to date, so that's the biggest thing. Because a lot of times, there are so many policies, so many changes. You know, our policies get changed all the time because there are different. Case decisions that come out from the Supreme Court, the mass Supreme Court. That we have to now make adjustments to our policies and how we do certain things, so this allows us for continuous review process. Uh, and and we're able to update that, but we're also able to be continually reviewed to make sure that we're at the highest level of standards. Um, when it comes to to our policies, procedures, our rules and regulations.
And sorry, just one last question. Oh, no, uh, but are you accredited now? We're not, okay.
We're in the certification process.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
Great, thanks Lakshmi, Mary Ann.
I I just also wanted to speak on accreditation, putting it in a a context that's similar to to going through the university. So so I do think everybody views it. With one piece for a marketing lens, certainly you want to go to an accredited university. But as the as the chief said, the real issue is that accreditation is a process that ensures. That you have the financial, the physical best practices for all your policies. And and the appropriate personnel to do the job that you are expected to be done, that's really what somebody is accrediting. And, um, now, you know, one of the frustrating pieces I think has been that the building. In all of these accreditation plans is a huge part of it. And we were not in a building that was going to be accredited by anybody. If we had asked for accreditation, we would have been put on. Full warning or de-accredited for our building, so, um. We are now solving that problem, but I but I do think there are substantial benefits on the rest of it as well. It usually comes with a cost to an organization and I I don't know that that's true for the police, but I presume that that's true. That the organizations that do these accreditations, there is a fee for their service and there is a benefit because there's usually some. Resource sharing of those best practices and things like that, so hopefully all those will come our way.
Great, thanks for that, Mary Ann. Uh, Lakshmi?
And is this an estate accreditation or is it a?
So there's two, there's the national and it's, so we have the mass, the state accreditation, but it goes off the national guidelines.
Um, any final comments before, uh, Marcus?
Yeah, I, yep, I just wanted to thank the chief for being here and, uh, these recommendations coming from all these different places and. The thought that you're putting into this and getting a chance to work with you. To do these things and being, you know, being able to collaborate, I just think this is awesome. And and I think that this town is slowly taking steps, uh, some some faster steps and some slower ones, but all with the common goal of making our town better. And that's because of your leadership, so I'm 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 looking forward to where we go from here and checking back in and getting updates, but. The the process has begun and it's, um, it's definitely a bright, it's going to be a bright spot and this is. This is awesome, so thank you for being here and thank you for all the time you put into this.
Thank you, Marcus. Dan?
Yeah, thank you, chief, and and thank, thank you also Kate and everybody else that that worked on this. This is a pretty thorough piece of work and I know this wasn't, you didn't do this in the last couple of weeks, you've been at this for a long time, you've gotten a lot of staff input. And looked outside agencies and so on to get, get what we need as well as develop internally. And this is all aimed at making, at following through on commitments made by the board and by the town. To improve, uh, public safety and particularly with the eye toward toward improving race equity in the town, so. I appreciate that you've done done this. We still have a long way to go, but this is this is a substantial piece of work and then just a comment on a couple of the things, the. You know, the the Post Commission, it sound, it's a. It's kind of a jargon expression for a lot of folks, but as I understand, what what we're dealing here with here. Is a brand-new state agency that's going to oversee basically police performance. And and issues that arise in 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 communities statewide and provide some hopefully effective. Uh, and comprehensive standards that will 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 follow through when there are problems. But that, when you create a new agency like that, and this is all part of the police reform statute enacted at the end of the last session. There's a long period, I think, as you spoke, chief, of of rolling out the agency, constructing the processes and the policies. Working through the the unintended consequences and things that go, don't go the right way, so what. That raises the issue, how does the town respond or continue or operate its. Public safety during the time that we're getting to that, because this is an agency. Public safety during the time that we're getting to that because this is an agency that has binding authority. But it's not fully in place yet and that is going to proceed in getting in place at an un- uncertain schedule. So the fact that you've set this up in a way that you're acting, you know, carefully. But independently to use the authority that you have on your own here within town. To do the things that we can do under the authority that we have in a way that will fit. When with the with the statewide system as it's put together. That's a, that's a whole extra piece of work in of yourself and the fact that you've taken that on. Uh, it's impressive and and really and positive. And. Uh, I note that the co- the comments on the subject of exiting civil service, I'll just repeat. Without laboring it, I believe that's an important step for us here in town. It's a very complicated system and a little hard to explain some of the. The reasons and benefits, but and it's not easy when it has to go through the collective bargaining system in a time when people are. Change is tough for everybody and we need to make sure that this works fairly for everyone involved. Um, but I think we can and that both. The department and the town will be better if we're able to complete that process. So thank you for that and for all of your efforts here. As well as all your the questions and the comments, which I think have been very helpful.
Thank you, Dan. Lakshmi?
Um, I just wanted to echo my sincere thank you for the, these are just the, this report and your responses are. Are just tremendous and we really appreciate um this effort to, you know, to um address some of these recommendations and. And where do we go, right? From from some of the the studies and from the Tidwell report and thinking about, you know, how do we acknowledge? What where we are and where we need to be, both as a community, but certainly, you know, as a nation overall. And I I really, you know, I just want to echo again, like I. I'm, you know, we're here for, you know, if you if you would like, I'm happy to help and I'm happy to, you know. Continue the dialogue and and think about ways to collaborate because um, this is, this is just tremendous. So really appreciate. Um, these uh tonight and your uh your responses. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lakshmi. Mary Ann?
I would just say thanks always and again.
Thank you, and I'll just, Chief, thank you for your leadership. Um, you know, you're part of what makes us such a strong and safe community. So. It's much appreciated and I think our our duty as a board is to support you and to support your department. Through these things and your hard work and it's just much appreciated. And what's even more appreciated is, you know, you're discussing this tonight. You know, opening up all of the answers to these questions. And I hate that we passed over the forty-seven page PowerPoint presentation that you compiled. It did not all go for not. We looked at it, it's available uh on the web and I I, you know, ask viewers to check it out because it's a lot of. It's a nice body of work and shows really the depth of the department. So. Uh, with that, I say good evening and I will see you around town.
Thanks. Take care.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief. Okay, um, next item on the agenda and there's quite a laundry list. Mrs. Patrick, but we'll start with you, Town Manager Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, remote participation by members of the public bodies. I think Katie's going to take this one.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so I was before the board at your last meeting. Just talking through all of the impacts of the governor's state of emergency coming to an end. Um, that expires next Tuesday, June fifteenth. So in terms of public meetings, as a reminder. Uh, there's two things that change on the fifteenth. Uh, the first is that uh the town needs to provide in-person access to the public again. On June fifteenth for all open meetings. Uh, the only um thing that could change this is an act of the legislature. I'll say since your last meeting, there's been action um in both the House and the Senate and committee hearings. Um, but there is not a consensus bill yet and nothing that's gone to the governor's desk. Um, so those legislative discussions continue. Uh, which leads us to the second thing that changes on June fifteenth, which is. Um, at this point that all members of uh boards and committees would also need to return in person. Unless this board um decides to adopt existing regulations um that are in place. Um, completely aside from COVID, already available to communities under the open meeting law. Um, so our recommendation to the board is uh that you do adopt a temporary policy. Uh, to allow uh committee members to participate remotely uh until September first. I think this will give us time to let the legislative discussions kind of land in their final place. Um, and it also really assists us operationally uh to let, uh, we have so many boards and committees and people who are kind of readjusting their lives. Like we all are. So having a little bit more time uh to navigate people being in person and remote. Uh, will smooth out some operational transitions that we have ahead of us. So happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that, Katie. And I know it's important. We have so many, as you said, operationally boards and committees. Will be interested in to see uh what happens um on the state side and. What then goes into effect. But in the meantime, I think this is a good stopgap effort. Um, I know you. Had the data, we discussed it, it is September first, twenty twenty-one. Um. So is there a motion to that effect?
I'll um, I'll offer the motion to um authorize the uh. I'm going to refine the language. Here it goes. That the board vote to authorize the adoption of nine forty CMR twenty-nine point one oh. So the remote participation is permitted for all meetings. For meetings of all local public bodies within the town of Needham until September one, twenty twenty-one.
Any discussion? Hearing none, oh, Mary Ann?
Matt, are we also going to discuss our own particular participation or is that, I'm not, is that a later point?
Yes, that's on board discussion, first item on board.
Alright, so I do support this for 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 putting in place as a general structure. Yeah.
Great. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, we come to the vote. Dan?
Yes.
Marcus?
Yes.
Lakshmi?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. That's unanimous. Thank you. Uh, next item, I will, I'm going to call it the July fifth parade update because although it's on the fourth. Uh, it's for the fourth, it's on the fifth. So Katie?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, you're correct. Um, because July fourth falls on a Sunday. Uh, the Exchange Club of Needham will be hosting the parade on Monday, July fifth at nine AM. As a reminder, um, we're not moving forward with fireworks display this year. That will be um excitement for twenty twenty-two. Um, but they're gearing up for the parade. Um, and I'd say um the Exchange Club is accepting. Uh, registrations for community floats and they're going to be judging um a house decorating contest. So. Um, if anyone's interested in all the details, uh NeedhamExchangeClub.org has all the information. I just want to say this will be my first Fourth of July Needham. I'm looking forward to it and really. Thank the planning committee for all of their coordination with the town.
Thank you. And they're also looking for convertibles to drive some people around. So if anybody knows. People with the convertible, I know that would be very welcome, but thank you for that. Thank you for the help with the planning. I know. Again, it's been another tough year and next year, some fireworks. Dan?
Can we walk this year?
I do not think that's going to be allowed from little birdies who tell me things, but. The request was asked, so I'll leave it at that. Thank you. Um, next, Marcus?
What was the walk in referring referring to?
Uh, historically, the uh exchange, it's it's a private activity. And the Exchange Club has never, except in one year when they couldn't get enough convertibles, allowed politicians to walk in the parade.
So we will, we will have a vehicle for the Fourth of Ju- Fifth of July parade at the, yes, Mary Ann?
Marcus, I'm sure you understand that it has the potential to extend the parade if it were permitted. So protecting everybody.
Right. Great. Okay, uh, next item, uh, online bill payment options.
Mr. Chair, at your last meeting, there was a question about um what bills can be paid online now and what are proposed. So I'd ask Dave to give us a brief update.
Thank you. Dave?
Yes, Mr. Chair. The uh, the town of Needham does uh offer online bill pay. For a a number of purposes and it includes uh. Uh, water and sewer bills. Uh, one uh can pay their bill by credit card or by uh an e-check. Or um, they can also pay their motor vehicle excise tax. Uh, again, by credit card and uh by an electronic um e-check. We also have the ability for people to donate to some of the um. Donation funds that the town has set up, which includes uh the property tax uh, property tax assistance program. Uh, we also have the gift of warmth that the uh public health department. Uh, manages in terms of providing assistance to uh Needham residents. Uh, we have the Community Revitalization Fund, which uh donations are accepted. The town also has business transactions uh in the town clerk's office. There's a number of permits that one. Is uh able to pay online and also our order online. Uh, includes uh birth certificates, marriage certificates, death certificates, burial permits. Are some of those items. Uh, one can also uh initiate the registration of their dog. Uh, and pay for their uh dog license uh through the town's website. There are a number of uh permits that the town um has that uh that can be. Initiated online. They include building permits. There are twelve different types of building permits that currently can be. Initiated online and paid online. Uh, one uh which, of course, uh you discussed earlier this evening. Uh, meeting with Park and Recreation, they have a robust number of programs. That you can register for online and also pay online. Uh, Park and Recreation Department is in uh development, looking at a new application. Which um they hope to uh roll out, the goal is to roll it out before the end of this uh calendar year. And the great functionality of that uh program will be able to expand to uh our aging programs. And youth services programs will be able to use the same um, the same application. Uh, we also have uh sixteen different uh permits issued by the Public Health Department. That can be initiated online and also paid online. Uh, and we're starting to expand in the public works area as of uh, as of today, we have seven permits that are. Um, I can be uh initiated online and paid online. And even the select board uh is slowly starting to get themselves out online. We um, right now, we have. Uh, four um types of uh annual permits that can be initiated online and paid for online. And then some of the other um uh items which are also uh available to pay online. And um, is if you're uh unfortunate to receive a parking ticket, you can pay for your parking ticket online. Um, and uh, and if uh unfortunately you have a trip to the hospital. By the fire department, the ambulance service, that can also be paid online. Now, um. Uh, one thing that important to understand, I'm sure the the all the board members understand that. There's not one simple application that can um, that can process all these uh transactions. Um, and they are niche markets that uh these are software programs developed by third parties. And we create links through our webpage. So it's not actually the town civic plus webpage that's processing the payments. It's uh loading the links in in verbiage that will direct um. The resident or business to a third-party provider and it's through that application. And customly designed to handle that particular type of function that um, the that the um. Ordering process, if it's a a service that's being ordered or a follow-up in terms of paying something that one has received. Such as an ambulance bill or a parking ticket that's going to um, a a different company. And in in the case of these, there are, uh, we're already looking at about seven different companies because. Not each company uh provides the functionality for the type of program such as Park and Recreation. The current provider truly is only geared towards recreational programs. But the new company that the Park and Recreation Program will be migrating to, it has a broader uh depth. In functionality that, you know, makes it possible to expand that to youth and uh family services and um council. On um, and and aging services programs. Uh, Viewpoint Cloud, uh something that the board has seen presented in the past, that's uh geared towards. Uh, regulatory permits and such. And that's uh first that with the building permit, the building department. As well as the health department and we've been expanding it uh. Uh, over the months and will continue to do so through the uh end of the calendar year. Uh, public works and the select board and eventually the fire department. The uh motor vehicle excise and water and sewer bills, those are bills that pushed out by the town and the individual. Can go online and look up their bill and pay their bill online. Property taxes, we don't have the functionality to pay online. And one of the reasons is because the application we have. Doesn't allow for the data to be exported to a third party so they can uh display the information to the customer. Uh, so that they can look up their bill and pay it. It's one of the many reasons why we're in the process. Of procuring a new uh revenue and billing software. And when uh that has been procured and uh rolled out. Uh, that is a functionality that uh will be provided to uh Needham taxpayers as well. So uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm uh, it's been a longer night than um, than anticipated. So. Uh, just we'll turn it over to questions and.
Thank you, Dave. Yes, it has. And uh, thank you for that list of all those uh avail- availability for. Online payments for all those areas in town business. Um, I know that was a question that was brought up and very, very helpful. Um, any questions on online bill payment options? Okay, thank you, Dave. Appreciate it. Very comprehensive as always. Um, next item, um reservoir path naming?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a follow-up from your meeting on April fourteenth in which we discussed um options for renaming the reservoir trail. That we had, we had received numerous requests for and um we had been discussing various namings. After the meeting, the the board's policy requires that you seek uh additional feedback after the initial meeting. And so. We have spent that time, we sent it out to um many groups and as well as the uh. Particular stakeholders who were involved in the design and the construction of the trail. And we received input from um NDI, the Human Rights Committee, the Planning Board, the Conservation Commission and the Park and Recreation Commission. Um, a lot of different feedback, but I think the summary um is that. The name shouldn't do too many things and it shouldn't be too long. Um, uh, and given um some feedback that we received from the family of David Summergrad who felt that. In his life, he he would never want to take all credit, he would want to give the credit to others. Um, we are now recommending to you that we name the path. Uh, the trail, the reservoir trail, the Amity Path, recognizing that it is a short path. Um, and that uh if the board uh so chooses to name that, we would continue to. Uh, promote the fact that it is an all abilities trail because we do see many folks um who would have trouble on it. Uh, a more traditional trail who are in wheelchairs or who are blind or otherwise. Um, uh, using the trail because it is uh laid out the way it is, that we would want to make sure that that continues.
Thank you, Kate. And I think that's an important point. I was fishing there, I think about a week ago and there was a gentleman in a wheelchair and I. We got talking and I asked where he was from. He's from Dedham, you know, so uh, I didn't ask him if the name was the reason why he came to the trail, but. Um, I think for many people who are not familiar with it, it may be. So I think that is a nice um add to to make sure that people know that, but. Uh, questions? Um, Mary Ann?
I was just going to say that I think the Amity Path is a lovely name. It's actually much nicer than the NART. And um, I do look forward to more accessible trails in Needham. I am actually personally grateful to this. Uh, the accessibility of this trail because at a time when all of our um running. You know, loops were all closed. This was the one path that I was able to go on when I was trying to recover during um the pandemic. So. Um, it's a terrific resource and the short distance is actually of value to people who are doing some physical recovery.
Great, thank you, Mary Ann. Any further discussion before I ask for a motion? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll offer the motion that the board vote to rename the reservoir trail the Amity Path.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we come to the vote. Lakshmi?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Marcus?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you. Thank you, Kate. Next item?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Also based on, on the board's last meeting about discussions about off-premises sale of alcohol. We have a draft of a home rule petition that would allow the town to adjust the number of off-premises licenses, essentially to bring it in line with Chapter 138 of the General Laws, which sets forth the quotas for licenses based on population size. And if the board, if the board thinks that this is the direction that you want to go and whether you want to move forward in October, I'll make sure that I talk to the appropriate folks to make sure that this is what is the best format for House Council where these bills start and included in the warrant, if that's what the board desires to do.
Thank you. And it's my understanding that it will go to town meeting and if adopted, then go to the ballot.
So this version does not have the ballot on there, on advice of Town Council, who's done a lot of this work. There had been a number, there've been any number of recent legislation where the ballot wasn't required. It seems that the House is maybe making changes to that requirement. On the other hand, those bills often tend to be adding, adding the number to the number that have already been adopted under Section 138. So it's not written that way now, but if that's the advice of House Council, I would bring that back to you and, and add it back here.
Okay. Thank you, Dan.
Yeah, I, I think I can, I, I concur with the idea of, of at least in the draft, putting the referendum provision in because although, and I, and certainly I'm not Town Council, Town Council has looked at this, but one of the things that you see in the legislative acts is that there are tremendous, they're very large numbers of instances of the, of, of additional licenses being added without referendums in communities, but they're always on home rule petitions. But those are all in, in communities that are on the state quota to begin with. Whereas our, our quota is set by a home rule petition, a statute that affects one town only that includes where this, where the, our quota is actually, was actually set by a referendum. So I, rather than put it in without a referendum and then get it kicked back to us for, for not having perceived that and lose six months in the process, I think it might be better to, to put, to put in this, in this to begin with. And as, in an addition, the idea that we don't know if there may be some, some town meeting members that don't want to have the quota increased. And this might be a grounds for those for, for opposition in, in the meeting that we can obviate by offering it up for, for a public vote to begin with. That's my, that's my thinking now. I, I think that what Kate has said in terms of if, if legislative council says, no, we don't require this, go ahead and do it on your own if you want, but historically, we've, with different other kinds of changes that we've gone, gone to the legislature for, we've sometimes been told this is, that you will need a referendum for this because your, your current rules were set by referendum and this is a similar situation. So I would, I would take that as the starting point. And anyway, I won't belabor that, but I think that might be a better way.
Okay. Thank you, Dan. Yeah, I'm not going to substitute my judgment. I would like to look into it a little more though, but I think that we can agree tonight that this is something, unless I hear otherwise, I would like to move forward with to the fall town meeting and then we can discuss how we're going to either, if it has to go to the ballot or if we want to put it on the ballot at another time. But I understand Dan's concern of, of there is objection that it may be some difficulties or bumps that we're not clear at at this time. But why don't we, unless I hear otherwise, looks like we'd like to move forward with this for the, for the fall special. And revisit this as far as the language at a future meeting. Okay. Next item, town manager report.
Two quick items, Mr. Chair. The first is Dave's going to give you a brief update on water and sewer rate hearings and why they're not happening this month.
Okay. Dave?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Usually in the month of June, there is a public hearing for setting water and sewer rates for the upcoming fiscal year. We had met with the Water and Sewer Rate Structure Committee, the Citizen Committee that's appointed by the Select Board. And we discussed preliminary numbers with, with them back on March 18th. And then we had a follow-up meeting with the committee on June 3rd. As I'm sure the board can appreciate, usage, water usage changed significantly this, this past year. Commercial usage is down and residential usage is up. Residential usage, most homes tend to be only in step one or step two when they normally are billed. And many of the commercial establishments tend to have their water usage or significant amount of their water usage in step three and step four. And the water and sewer rates are designed that the higher step that you're in, the higher rate you pay per hundred cubic feet. So when the commercial use drops down, you're losing a greater amount of revenue, even though the residential use is up because they're not offsetting, they're not offsetting the loss of the commercial usage. Now that the state has reopened and that economic activity is starting to pick up. And we would like to see if there is a reverse in the trend in terms of commercial usage and to see what usage is for the last quarter of fiscal 2021. And because we do read and bill the commercial accounts on a monthly basis, we would be able to look at their summer data to, which I do believe will show improvement. The question is, is how much it will improve? And the residential usage, I would anticipate will decline somewhat, but perhaps not as much because not everyone's returning to work and hence using their employment's water and facilities rather than staying home. The committee thought that would be a good approach. So we will reconvene with the committee in September, look at the data then in terms of developing a rate recommendation to the board with an anticipated public hearing that the board would hold, would be October 12th. In keeping with the tradition of the board, after the hearing, you would not be voting rates that evening, but at your following meeting, which is scheduled for October 26th. And that will allow for the public that, that wasn't prepared to speak to, to rates, to write in and provide further comment that the board members could take into consideration.
Great. That makes a lot of sense. Thank you, Dave, for that. And it's fluctuating market and use. So thank you. Kate?
Here, just the final item, something on the good news front. We heard from Congressman Ockingkloss's office today that at least in step one of a multi-step process, the Christina Street Bridge project that we have supported along with the City of Newton and the Department of Conservation and Recreation for the Commonwealth got funded in the House Committee at the, to an amount of 1.6 million, which covers almost the entire construction. So that's very exciting. Step two is reported out to the full house, which seems like, you know, smooth sailing. But as we know, I think it was an understatement by Congressman Ockingkloss's office to say step three is the Senate, which is more complicated. So this is however, not the big infrastructure bill. It's more of a bread and butter surface transportation bill that happens on a very regular basis. So fingers crossed, the City of Newton really has been carrying this, but we've written any number of last minute letters of support. And so we're just trying to keep moving that. Just coincidentally, Katie and I had a chance to walk over there, although we didn't walk on the bridge because we've seen the pictures of the degradation of the struts, but it would be an excellent way for bicyclists to get from Needham to Newton without having to, you know, to, to go on the, the traditional routes of Kendrick Street or Highland Avenue. So we really, we think this will come to fruition no matter what. And we hope that this funding comes through. So with that, Mr. Chair, that ends our report.
That's great. Kate, do you know if they're taking testimony or if it's worth another letter for, from us? I'd just be curious if they would. I know we've written so many letters, but.
Well, I think the letters to Congressman Ockingkloss to get it in the budget, I, you know, I'm not, I suppose we could correspond with our senators.
Yeah, I was just curious, you know, they had to miss an opportunity to.
You know.
Ask for some.
To, to give credit to Newton and their planning department. If it's needed, they will tell us and we'll get it right to them.
Good. Okay. That's excellent. It's nice to have that relationship with them.
Great relationship.
Great relationship. Terrific. So thank you. Next item on the agenda, board discussion, June 22nd, 2021 meeting. And I'll just start, my desire is to have an in-person meeting on the 22nd in our chambers. And I know we voted earlier for other boards and committees to be able to do it remotely. But I think to me, it's important that we get back to town business. And I know town employees are working in these offices. And I'd like to get together as a board face to face for the business on the 22nd. So I just wanted to open that up to discussion. I know it's a voting item as well. Marcus? And then Dan.
So the question I had as far as public participation and being on Zoom and whatnot, we'll still be able to have that and host that because the Select Board Chambers is one of the places that is able to do that, correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, sorry. If Kate can give a little more information about that. And as far as we'll be able to have people, we have to have people to be, to come inside as well. So we can have that dual function.
Right. And I misspoke. I think the intent is to do it in Powers Hall, I think where it's a little more open. But Kate, if you could discuss the technology that we have for that?
I will, but I will also phone a friend.
Okay.
The Select Board Chambers and Powers Hall are both fitted out for cable to be able to create what is sort of a Zoom room, which you may have seen that the school committee has been doing where the school committee is on Zoom and people can come in on Zoom. And they both are available. I have heard from people that, you know, if there's a crowd, Powers Hall might be a better venue to start back in because the, the Select Board Chambers is, is very tight. We are planning a meeting next week to walk through and potentially have a trial to see how this might work because it's, we, we've never done it. And the school committee hasn't done it yet either with people in the room. Katie, did you want to add anything to that? What have I missed?
No, you covered it.
Great. Thank you, Katie, and thank you, Kate. Dan?
I, I think that I, if they sound like statements, they're not, they're questions. But it's my understanding that under the vote that we've taken, which is under the pre-existing statute, which is all that we have with the state of emergency ending on the 15th and not, and no final action yet from the, from the state on extending the, the emergency rules. Is that all boards are required to meet physically from the 15th on? And that, but that we, people, individual members can participate remotely as long as there's a quorum of the board in the meeting room, including the person that's chairing the meeting. That's, that's, and I see the, the town manager nodding. So I, I, I think I, I'm glad I'm on the right track if, if that's the case. And then the second thing is because I think that it's important that the public be able to see what we're doing. And I, and I'm confident that we're going to be able to do that because we've always been able to do that. You know, in recent, since based on the technology that we've had in recent years. But that, I would hope that the, if at all possible, that the agenda not include any items that we, what require or, or public, public input at the meeting because I think that it, it's going to be very problematic in the early go-arounds. For example, they have a liquor license hearing. I wouldn't want to do that in, in a meeting where someone might want to be on remote and try to participate remotely, a member of the public, because I think that would be very tough. It would be best to limit this to situations where only individual, the only remote participants would be members of this board. But that the public would have the ability to observe the entire meeting. And the fact that we wouldn't be rigged up to allow public comment wouldn't be material because we wouldn't have any public comment items. That would be my preference.
Unfortunately, we have a liquor license that's already been noticed for the 22nd.
So how do we, now I have to ask the question, how are we going to manage, are, are we going to be able to manage that?
We believe we can handle it. The public can come to the meeting and we can take public inquiries from the Zoom aspect. Sandy, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
Sandy, and then Marcus.
Chair, I have a question. This public hearing was noticed via Zoom. So how do we change it?
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
It would still, if you offer the Zoom component, it would still have an opportunity to be both Zoom and in person.
Right. It would still have a Zoom component. That's correct. Yep. And I, I will tell you, this is not ideal. And I know we're going to be going through this, you know, as things come up. But I think that we still have to move along with business. I know it's not ideal. But what is the hearing on, what is that for? A change of?
It's for a new license for a restaurant going in where UPS was.
Okay. Thank you.
If I could add one thing, Mr. Chair, what Mr. Matthews said is that the lay of the land as of tonight, based on your vote, is that all boards must meet in person in, as of June 15th with the public there. That could change with, with overriding legislation between now and the 15th. That's all.
Okay. Thank you. Marcus?
And I was going to ask about that. If it does change between now and then, how does that affect us? With legislation. So what does that mean for the Select Board? Is, is that just, is that for all boards? Like we all follow the same suit if it gets extended to September 1st or? How does that change? That's, that's why.
It would apply to all boards, but the, the vote that you take now will determine where you're going to meet. How you.
I, I think it's really about intent. If we want to meet as a body, then we can vote to meet as a body. And even though legislation says you can participate remotely, we will choose as a board not to do so in meet in person. Obviously, that's my preference. And I think right now, the way, as Dan was saying, it's written is that we, we have to meet as the chair and people are able to meet. We have to meet unless they're not able to. And then they, if there's not a quorum, it would be remote. So again, my preference is to get back to work here and hear town business as our town employees are doing during the week. Discussion?
Just one more.
Yes.
I, if the, it would be ideal to start without public participation. But it would also be ideal to have this trial while Sandy is still working with us. She's the expert on Zoom and how these meetings run. And I, I really don't think we should, you know, if this, if, if, if possible, I think it would be best to do that.
Okay. Sandy?
I would just like to echo that. A while back, I had spoken with the IT Director and the Cable Executive Director, and we were prepared to do this. So I, I feel confident it'll work.
Thank you, Sandy. Dan?
Another, another question. If, if we're, okay, so assuming that we're meeting in person on the 22nd, which I think we're doing, and we're going to be having, and, and, and a person wishes to testify remotely, will we be able to have them appear on, will we be able to have them appear on screen?
Yeah.
Because I, the, the phone-in testimony to me was, I, I prefer that we be able to see people to the extent that we can. It's helpful to them in making their, their presentation.
Yes.
Yes. Agreed.
Take a look at some school committee meetings, if those are posted or available on cable, you can see how it's been operated.
And we had that experience. I know Dan and I and Mo met with the school committee, what about a couple of months back? And being in person is a complete, completely different type of feeling, you know, it's nice to have a meeting that way. So different experience. Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none. Is there a motion? Is. Do you want me to add for the motion that the board vote to hold? It's June 20. Do you want me to ask for the motion of the board vote to hold? It's June twenty-second, twenty-one meeting in person.
In person. Second.
Yeah.
Um, I, I'll make that motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, we come to the vote. Dan?
Yes.
Lakshmi?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Marcus?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you. That's unanimous. And, um, we'll have to coordinate getting up and running and especially from my seat, trying to get, make everything go smooth. So, let's go.
We will draft up, um, some, a list of things to think about and also we'll try to set up a practice session.
Okay, great. Um, next item on the agenda, Mary Ann and Marcus, um, Nuwari update. I'll send it to Mary Ann as the chair.
So, um, I'm going to review some key points from our meeting last night, uh, following our agenda. Um, we discussed, uh, setting up a committee that would do the planning work for our community conversations. Um, that particular planning committee will start during the summer. It will also include, uh, some representatives from some other boards and committees in town such as, um, Needham Human Rights Committee, Needham Diversity Initiative at any rate. So we'll be thinking about who the members are and some members of Nuwari have volunteered for that. We actually began our meeting with a discussion about the composition of the committee. Um, we did have some change in membership at the end, uh, or at our last, uh, session. So I will be making a recommendation to this board for appointment. To Nuwari, we need a new school committee representative. Um, and, uh, we have also asked the high school for a student representative to join the committee. Um, after some discussion, we ended up concluding that we would not add, uh, more members. There was some discussion about adding somebody from housing and from a variety of other roles, for example, but we will look for appropriate liaisons from those groups who will join the committee when those particular topics and when that work is being undertaken. Um, we also had, uh, discussed, um, the upcoming, uh, communication sessions that are being run by the town's, um, public information officer. The first one of those is on June thirtieth. Um, and asked Nuwari members if they could reach out to their networks to also make community members aware of those sessions. Um, something that I hope that all of us can also do to help, um, reach people in town, including, as I say, reach Joe Average Citizen and find out how they really would like to be communicated with and see if we can find the right time, place and means, um, to reach everybody with all the news that's going on from town, um, that they would be interested in. And then the last thing I'll note from our session last night was that different but related, um, the group decided that they thought it would be of interest to gather together as a group in person. And we are looking at doing that on June twenty-eighth. And in conjunction with doing that that evening, uh, we will want to, uh, plan some time and get the word out to the community where we will ask the chairs of various committees that have vacancies to join us and be available to community members to answer questions if they might be interested in applying for various committee openings. Um, so that's one of the aspects of outreach that we talked about. Um, on how to start to, to reach some new people for committees among a variety of other methods, but we thought this in-person method might be something else to try. So that is sort of my very quick summary at this point in the evening. I don't know, Marcus, if you want to add to it.
Um, yeah, I think just, uh, kind of what you just said about various, um, other ways of trying to reach the people and having that in person. But then also reaching out to our different committees and, and local organizations, you know, the chairs and making sure that we're pushing out any and all vacancies that we have, whether they're on boards or, um, hiring for town staff or things like that, to make sure that we're trying to get um, as broad of, uh, a pool and interest as we can and be inconsistent with that going forward, I think is going to be, um, important for the, uh, the landscape and, you know, how we're trying to build and, uh, be more intentional about, um, diversifying our, um, our, our, our town, um, boards and then also our, uh, sorry, I'm sure our town boards, I, I think it's, it's nine oh five, our town boards and then also, and then also just our town employees as well.
It is nine oh five. Yes. So thank you for that, Marcus. And I, that June twenty-eighth, if I can make that, I will make it because that's going to be a great meeting because I know so many people there have never met each other in person, including myself. You know, we see each other in other, I've seen you before, everyone here before and after the pandemic, but so many people in that room are new to town government and lending their voices. And it will just be nice to see all of them together and, and it'll, it'll be a good time. So, um, and I encourage other groups, like you said, to come and join as well. So, uh, great idea and, and a great job moving forward, Mary Ann and Marcus. Uh, with that, I don't believe there are any other committee reports. I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
A motion that we adjourn the meeting tonight.
Okay. Second, um, Dan?
Yes.
Marcus?
Yes.
Lakshmi?
Yes.
Mary Ann? Oh.
Yes.
Thought you were being suspenseful there. Okay. And the chair votes yes. Have a great night, everybody.